Good afternoon and welcome to this special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. I've asked Commissioner Trace if she would start this meeting with an invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask you to stand, please.
Dear Lord, we thank you so much that we can gather and that we can discuss differences. And I just ask you to please keep this meeting peaceful, to watch over us, and when we leave, and just to remember that we are all Americans and we stand together. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have lots of seats if y'all would like to take a seat. It is very good to see all of you here this afternoon on this, I guess it's raining out, kind of rainy afternoon for this special meeting. I wanted to tell you about how this special meeting came into being in light of events that are going on throughout our country and as we became aware of an event planned for Monday to talk about the memorial that is the Confederate Memorial that is over at the historic courthouse. I, as the chairman of the board, decided that we need to talk about public safety and we needed to have a conversation to decide what we will do to make sure that our citizens and our employees remain safe. So I consulted with the county attorney and with staff and we decided to hold this, what is now called an emergency meeting, under the statutes, so that we could have this discussion here today. And I really appreciate all of the cooperation from my fellow board members, Commissioner Baugh is on the phone, so we do have a full board here to discuss this. And so at this time, I want to say that this is of great concern to Manatee County citizens. And why we appreciate the input of other groups, this is about Manatee County and how Manatee County is affected. And I implore, as we do in this country, we have peaceful demonstrations, and I implore whatever goes on, whatever discussions go on, that they be done in a spirit of goodwill and cooperation. And so with that said, I do want to ask our, because in this day and age of social media, of information that spreads at the speed of light, I would like to ask our law enforcement officials to come forward and give us any update with what we might expect or what we anticipate is happening in this community on Monday, so you'll get a feel for why we felt it was important to have this meeting. Any information, an update. I know there are a lot of people that are watching this, have read online, have read in the newspaper, but I think any information that we can have on what we might expect to happen in downtown Bradenton on Monday would be helpful. Please just come forward and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colonel Dwayne Dennison, with the Manatee County Sheriff's Office. Thank you, Commissioners. I want to commend y'all on having this meeting. I think it's a good piece of knowledge to give to the public and let them know where we stand and how we feel about this incident. I can assure you that we are going to make sure it's a safe and peaceful environment for everybody, for all, just like you got to hear in the Pledge of Allegiance, justice for all. And we're going to assure that that takes place. We do have a plan in place. Just to relieve you of that, we've been planning for several days. But at this point in time, we don't anticipate anything derogatory. We're fairly confident it will be a peaceful protest and demonstration, and we're going to make sure that that is what takes place.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to add? Okay. And I have been in touch with the mayor of the city of Bradenton, and he assures me, of course, that the police department is also very aware of, and again, our information comes primarily from what we read online and from the newspapers, so we don't really know what to expect, but we want to be ready. We want our citizens and our employees to remain safe, and that is of the utmost importance. But obviously, the topic that is here before us today is something that I think has recently only come to light for most of us. I will say for me personally, I was not even aware that we had a Confederate memorial in downtown Bradenton until I started reading the news, the media, about it. And I think maybe many people actually were not aware. I will tell you that since this began, I have taken a lot of time to read as much as I possibly can. I would like to thank the Clerk's Office, Angel Colaniso. You know, Angel is in charge, the Clerk Office is in charge of our historical resources in this community, and they do a wonderful job of maintaining our historical resources. So they have provided an incredible amount of information about how this memorial came into being in 1924. I'm going to ask that that information be placed online so people can educate themselves about how this memorial came into being. The folks, the community leaders at the time that raised the funds to be able to dedicate this museum to the county and the city, it was actually done by, I gotta keep saying memorial. I encourage you to read what the difference between a monument and a memorial is. I've been educated on that. The memorial was actually paid for by donations of citizens of this community, and it was raised through the United Daughter of the Confederacy, Judah P. Benjamin Chapter. They began fundraising for this monument in February of 1924, and then it was dedicated on Sunday, June 26, 1924, at 3:30 PM. Recognizing that what has happened in other areas of the community, the county country, excuse me, it's been kind of a long week, we've had lots of meetings, I did reach out to Jan Green, who is president of our local chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy. She also happens to be chairman of the Manatee County Historical Commission. Her first request was to me was to make sure the memorial, the actual structure itself remains safe. She asked me if we could take this structure down and store it for safekeeping so that it is not a flashpoint for any kind of activity that might occur. I said that's exactly what staff and I had discussed. You know, this memorial structure was moved in 2014. It's not in its original location, and the clerk can tell you that it was moved when we redid the grounds that were dedicated to Chip Shore. And so we know it can be moved safely, and that is the recommendation after discussing with staff that I'm bringing before my board today, that that memorial be placed in safekeeping so that it will not be a flashpoint, it will not be a target for any activity. We're not saying that there is anything that is going to happen to it after that. There has to be a community discussion. This is an emergency meeting to take emergency action. So that is the only action that I'm asking my board to consider today. We know this is a huge concern.
Wait, she can't make it.
She can't make it.
That's why I said so move. No, she can't.
She can move if she wants.
I just want to know where the statue or the monument was beforehand.
It was somewhere on the grounds. I don't know if, I don't know if, Angel, if you want to come forward perhaps, Angel can maybe answer some of these questions. Angel Colaniso, who is clerk of our court and keeper of the historical, well, whatever, our historical parks?
Historical resources.
Resources, thank you.
Angel Colaniso, clerk of the court for Manatee County. The memorial was actually located closer to the north side, more visible on Manatee Avenue side. In fact, it's visible in older paintings, if you see older paintings of the courthouse. It was moved as part of the landscape project. My predecessor, Mr. Shore, had it part of the design that it be moved where it presently is, and it actually was only moved a few feet, several feet, not far.
And that's not unusual for when you're redoing grounds to, you know, try to create a beautiful environment.
Correct.
So at this time, I'm going to go ahead. We had a motion. Can you just wait, Commissioner?
Yes, Madam Chair, I can.
And I know that we're going to hear from the public. Thank you, Angel. Might have more questions for you as this goes on. So I'm going to take questions from our board, and then we'll take public comment. Commissioner De Sabatino is on the board.
That was my question, where was it before?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're good. Commissioner Whitmore?
And tell me where Ms. Green is from again?
She's here. She's a local.
No, she's on the board of?
She is the president of the local chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy, and she is also chairman of the Manatee County Historical Commission.
Okay, and that's the organization that actually, I think, paid to have it moved also, right?
They paid to have the memorial erected. They fundraised, and again, you know, if you look at the articles in the news at the time, I mean, these articles ran for three pages. There's considerable information in the historical records on how this all came into being, what their thoughts were, and I encourage you to read that. It's really, you can be very much educated about this issue, and it's not what you think. And that's all I can say. I'm sorry.
Is Ms. Green here? Can I just ask?
No, she is not. Well, she's not here today. I spoke to her. She's going to send a letter.
I think I had heard that the organization actually paid to move it to the side of the, I remember some kind of people saying they were raising money to move it because it was being moved from the front, so we don't have any documentation of that. We're not aware of it.
Can you answer that question, and I assume you would know?
Because I think it's kind of been in there.
Vanessa, can you hear us? Vanessa? Vanessa?
It's been in their auspices, I know, for a long time.
We need to get Vanessa back.
Madam Chair, if I may, it appears as though Commissioner Baugh is not in communication with us here.
Yeah, I just heard.
Vanessa, can you hear us?
Hold on for just a minute. Vanessa had plans to be out of town. Call an emergency meeting, it's hard to get everyone here, so we would like to have her. I know she very much wants to be involved in the conversation. I'm going to try to get her again. Can you hear us, Vanessa? Vanessa, can you hear us?
Hold on. What about if one of us use our cell phones and put it to the mic to call her? Would that be okay?
Have you got me this time?
Can you hear us? Can you hear us, Vanessa?
Yes, Betsy, I can. Evidently, I was on mute. I've been trying to watch the meeting, however, the live stream.
Okay. All right, we will try.
Cut the volume down so that you can't hear it, however.
Okay. We'll ask everyone to lean into the microphones and talk. That should help. Angel's going to explain about how the memorial got moved.
It was moved part of the landscape project by the company, and I have looked to see if it was singled out or line itemed, and it wasn't. It was inclusive in the project, and that was part of the project. And like I said, it wasn't moved very far, but I believe it had to make room for the gazebo and the garden that is there.
There was no special funding?
Not at all.
To move it as it got moved in 2014?
No.
It was only from the very beginning? Carol, does an answer your question? Commissioner Trace?
If we remove it before Monday, what's the cost and who is paying?
We have been in touch, John, I'm going to let you answer that. That's a technical question.
Thank you, Madam. I'm John Osborne. I'm the interim deputy county administrator. We have been in contact with a contractor who could potentially move the object and move it into stores for us. We have some rough estimates of cost, however, it could vary a bit. We estimate about $10,000 to move and store it. Again, it could vary slightly based upon time and materials and that kind of thing. It is a large, heavy object.
It would be come out of the, from general fund? Yeah, unless the bucks want to chip in, but no.
Reserves.
That was a joke, I'm sorry. Yeah, as far as we know, it would have to come from county reserves, $10,000.
What about the powers chipping in? Madam Chair, if I may?
Okay. Commissioner De Sabatino, and then Commissioner Smith.
I want to ask the county attorney. I went ahead and I walked across the street and I took pictures of all four sides. Can I put it on the overhead and I can email the pictures in?
Certainly. Yeah, the newspaper did have, Bradenton Herald did have pictures of all four sides, so I saw that.
Okay, so if you can zoom in, that's from the center of the courtyard looking west, okay? And then I'm going to zoom in on what the bottom of the, it says, I'm going to read it. "Calm and noble in peace, courageous and chivalrous in war, true to the best traditions of the South. The Confederate soldier lives enshrined in the hearts of his grateful countrymen on the bottom, Robert E. Lee." The next side, which would face north, is a picture of a flag. It's very worn. It's hard to see, and it says, "In memory of our Confederate soldiers." Can you see that? The side facing, so facing west, erected by Judah P. Benjamin Chapter, United Daughters of the Confederacy, June 3, 1924, Stonewall Jackson. And this other side was hard to see because it's heavily shrubbed now. And has some kind of logo, 1861, 1865, lest we forget Jefferson Davis. And I will email those to the clerk of the court.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, my phone has been ringing all day, so I was a little tardy getting in here. Several attorneys called me. In fact, my good friend David Finkelstein, who's actually was a representative many years, but several more called me. In fact, several told me that they don't believe their client can get a fair trial in Manatee County. If this continued to stay and what's going on in America, and the statements being said in the pool of jury potentials in Manatee County, and it remains up, and what's the protests and all this different stuff, that they have serious concern about a jury pool, and that they may even challenge a moving to trial. This board is responsible for the courthouse, the grounds, and everything else. Now, two years ago, when this issue came up, it wasn't hijacked. Now it has been hijacked for issues other than what it was meant to be, to be honest with you. The tide has changed to the point now where it's being used to combat racism and divisiveness in the community, separating people, talking about Jewish people, blacks. It's just chaos. It has been used as a tool to divide this community. And for us to move forward and to keep someone from getting hurt, possibly Monday, we need to take action in this meeting today.
Generally do not show those kind of signs because it doesn't help for us to make the decision, and our county attorney generally tells us that we don't need those kind of demonstrations when we're trying to make a decision.
I believe in history. I understand history. I would not fight against history. But part of history without telling the truth, and a half-truth is outright lie. So we need to make sure we understand what it actually stands for. And I don't want to go there, and I said it before. Until emails started coming into this community, Democrat, Republican people, stay on your knees and keep worshiping parties. That's what you do. I don't worship parties. I worship right from wrong.
We know that this is a very emotional issue to many in this community, but we've got to have leadership, and I commended you at the board meeting because you are in a unique position to provide leadership, calm. We need to maintain a very civil conversation about this. We understand that, you know, things can rise to a very emotional level, but this is a situation where, yes, history matters, but people's perceptions are going to be very different of what that history was. So Commissioner Trace?
I've been thinking about this also and have talked to a lot of people, and I wanted to make sure that I got my thoughts down, so I wrote something. I'd be happy to give it to the clerk. Memorials to remember. Removing the monument would be easy. Out of sight, out of mind. History is what it is, good and bad. I learned war by my mistakes. What does this memorial stand for? Veterans. Men who died for their state and country. All Confederate soldiers are veterans. Even some are interned in Arlington. When I see this memorial, I think of them. People do the right thing for the wrong reason. I am not getting into the reason for the war. No one in this room was there, but we should learn from it. Men went to war because their leaders could not find a peaceful pathway. Watching current events make me wonder if history will repeat itself. All the loss of life, waste of resources, and division in the short term changed little. We should learn that real change happened 100 years later when Dr. King peacefully protested. What lessons we learned from memorials are up to us. I chose to take that violence only solves problems for the short term. I've talked to many people about this. Mr. Palmer said discussion with anyone but Commissioners is okay. I talked to everyone that has passed in my path. People at the library, Publix, folks in the lobby, and I've called people. Only two people said that they are offended. Most say they are tired of being bullied and told what is politically correct. But everyone agreed it is not worth dying for, which I think is what we are here for. We do not want a Charlottesville. I wish to thank the librarian Kathy Slusher, the Clerk's Office, for the information provided to me. Charles, you and I are opposite sides on this issue. I respect that. But on other issues, we agree on affordable housing, early reading. How is it that no one protests these issues, but we now find money to remove a monument no one even knew existed? We can do better than this. Let's use this for positive. Let's raise money for the early reading instead of destruction of property.
Amen.
That's very good.
Let's attack real issues. I have faith in Manatee County citizens to protest amicably. We have always worked together, even when we disagree. To people who come Monday, R-E-S-P-E-C-T. I looked it up to make sure I spelled it right. Respect each other.
Rita Franklin.
Realize that America was built on diversity. I can disagree with you, but still respect you. Do not let haters rule the day. Reach a place where both can learn from our mistakes. One of the reasons I ran for commission is my love for this county and its people. I want to be part of harmony, not violence. Let's put a step forward and deal in real issues. I am not a veteran, but I feel all veterans who died would want to grow and be better because of their sacrifice. Let's not have violence over this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner De Sabatino?
That was excellent. I really appreciate that. It also came to a head yesterday at the port where someone had brought up a comment that with people there from different countries, that they might be offended that we give the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. And you were there, Commissioner Baugh, you were the port chair.
Yes, I was.
We were all there.
And we don't have buttons here, so I raised my hand, and I think I was respectful in saying that I appreciate everyone attending, watching, participating. That's my flag. That's your flag. We pledge allegiance to that. If we start, in my opinion, if we start removing that monument, then the next step is that flag, and then the next step is everything else that we hold dear. I am not a veteran. My husband was. My father was. My father-in-law was. They fought for this country. They didn't die for the country, but they fought for this country. And it's my opinion right now that this country is in such a state of divisiveness. And you have the left side and the right side and the middle, and, you know, we all need to come together. And I say all along, when you're elected to this board, you're elected representing a party, but we don't vote on party issues. Nothing here is really partisan, and it's just your core values. And as Commissioner Trace eloquently put it, we ran for office because we love this county. We love our citizens. I love South County, and I'm here to represent them, and we vote for all the citizens of this county. So a lot of times, we're sitting here, and it might not be this. It might be a land use meeting. It might be something else. But a lot of times, we're in a no-win. This is a no-win situation because half the people that you'll talk to say one thing, the other half say another. I too called a lot of people today and asked their opinion one way or another, and give me an unbiased opinion of what you think. And it was unanimous that what I've just said, when's the next thing? This is a statue that's been there since 1924. I've been by it a million times and never even knew it was there. It's mostly vegetation around it. I understand and I empathize with Commissioner Smith that everyone has a perception of what things represent. You know, if there was, things offend different people for different reasons. But I think this is a time for all of us to come together and be strong and say, this is our history. You can't hit a delete button and erase it. You can't. It's here. Learn from it, and let's move on. I feel like we're going backwards to the civil rights movement, and for what? What is it going to accomplish? It's just putting brother against brother, and I just...
Commissioner De Sabatino, you're kind of crossing the line when you mentioned civil rights movement. We're going back to it. I mean, be careful.
I was going to ask you to clarify what you were doing back to the civil rights movement, what you meant by that.
Well, I just think, I'll leave it alone. I'll retract that. So, no, I just, where do we draw the line? Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Madam Chair, I want this motion to go up or down because this is the telling point. The issue is clear to me. When children come to me and people, white supremacists and Ku Klux Klan embrace statues all over America, that wasn't going on two years ago, four years ago. They have embraced statues. That's their rallying point of recruiting now, to organize our children, to teach hate. That's what the statue has turned into.
If you do not, if you do not stop your outbursts, you will be escorted out by the police. You do not make outbursts during our meeting. Thank you. Thank you. You will have an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
This what has happened.
Or you'll go.
NAACP is one thing. We're not talking about NAACP. We're talking about the statue. And I'm pretty sure you give him opportunity to speak. But what we're talking about is what we see in all of America now. Where the rallying point has been this statue as a tool to divide. Now, a 32-year-old woman who was protesting was run down in the street, was not doing anything wrong. Unity is removing this monument as a recommendation came to a place where we can study both sides of the history. And the only thing this commissioner is saying, there's two sides to that history. Why would we educate our children on what that statue actually means without telling them the truth? The truth hurts sometime. I had no idea realizing that what I seen on TV and what I just seen on TV, where they amend their using these statues to recruit individuals, and most of the individuals don't respect government or law enforcement. They anti-government now. My relatives was in the war and died. Veterans died in that war. Purple Hearts in my family died in that war. I got a Turkish judge sent an email, remove the statue. The elected public offender of the 12th Judicial Circuit said, Commissioner, you need to remove the statue. This is what we're dealing with. Now, should we put something on the yard showing during this movement that took place where individuals actually home? Churches was burned down? Women was raped? All these overthrowing the government, attempted overthrow the government? That's part of that same history with the statue. So how are we going to worship a statue and say the history is the history unless we embrace all the other things that took place? The NAACP president was killed by the Ku Klux Klan in Florida. So it's not about NAACP, Democrat or Republican. It's about what's right today. I would be the first one to say, let's keep it there. But what I'm seeing on TV, there are people, men that they're using this as a tool to recruit children now, and now it's getting into the school system. Now they finding out about what history really is, discrimination. I have lived long enough, Madam Chair, where I couldn't even eat into restaurants during Place full up with people eating, it says closed soon as we walked up. I have lived long enough to see that. And if someone today don't understand that people died, white folks died too, protecting black folks. They died protecting them from being home. They died from protecting them from eating. So these are the things. Manatee County don't care nothing about tourism around here. One of the candidates was in the finals, Rid Drew, the only black. Rid Drew. I bet you because of this statue, why would a administrator come here and we can't settle the statue issue? Folks, this ain't about changing history. I want history preserved. I think the chair made a recommendation. She talked to the leadership of the organization. Let's study the history. Let's see where we went wrong. But to continue to put it to the courthouse, be careful what you ask for. And I believe in calm.
On my word.
I believe in peaceful marching.
Vanessa, you...
I believe we should do all of these different things.
Mute her.
But history today will let us know where we heading with this board after this vote. And I can tell you, my life and your life would change forever. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ball, would you like to, you didn't push a button, but I'm going to pretend like you did.
Thank you. I was waiting for everyone else to speak, and yes, then I would.
Okay. She's ready for it.
Has everyone else spoke that's on the board?
Yeah, at least once. We'll let you have a time. Some of us are going to speak again, but go ahead.
Okay. Well, you know, I am amazed. I'm sitting here, I'm 63 years old, and I can tell you now that there's hurt in white people on this issue as well, Charles. It hurts me to know what went on in this country, the history in this country that happened. I have no control over that. My parents had no control over that. My grandparents had no control over that. No one in my family owned a slave. No one in my family owned a plantation. But you know what? I had family in that war. And that war happened not just because of slavery. But you know, that being said, I understand the hurt that comes from the Civil War if you're a black person. I understand the hurt that happened and the horrible things that happened. I am not proud of my ancestors that participated in violence against the black population. And that being said, I wouldn't support it today either. So if anyone comes in this county and they protest that monument and they do violence because of that monument, then you know what? They need to be arrested. I don't care what color they are. I don't care where they come from. That is against the law. And that's what it's all about, the law. So I stand with Charles Smith on the harm that came, the terrible astrada, astratch...
Atrocity.
I'm so upset I can barely even talk, Charles. It upsets me. It hurts me to know. But then again, perhaps we need to make sure that we do keep that war in front of our children so they can learn from the mistakes that happened in this country so many years ago. Because you know, it seems to me that we're starting to see some of the same things happening all over again. We're going down the wrong direction. And it seems to me that if we give in to the thugs and the violence that's taking place, we are no better. We cannot allow this to happen in Manatee County or anywhere in this country. So I have to tell you, I've had a lot of phone calls. I've had a lot of emails. I've had prayer, many, many, many prayers, asking the Lord to please help me on this decision because this is a huge decision that affects not only Manatee County, but the United States of America. And when I have someone come into our meeting and tell me that we need to stop the Pledge of Allegiance, I mean, I can't believe some of the things that I'm hearing today that's going on in this country. So you know, I feel in my heart that I understand how some people might not want to see that memorial. For me, that memorial shows a horrible time that went on in this country, and we can't make it stop. We can't make the history change. It is what it is. Am I proud of it? No. But it's our history. It happened because the slaves came here from England, not by our ancestors necessarily because not all of us were from England. But that's how it started in this country. Terrible thing. Would it happen here today? Absolutely not. Would anybody let that happen today? Absolutely not. So I have to tell you, I don't like moving monuments that were put here way before I was ever even thought of in my mama's eye. I don't like to make those decisions. But perhaps we need to look at moving all of this together. We can't erase our history. We can't move a monument because we're afraid that people might come in and cause harm. That's breaking the law, and they need to be arrested. But I do also think that maybe it is time to move that monument somewhere else where the Civil War that Florida was a part of, it was a southern state, whether you like it or not, it was part of the Confederacy. We can't change that. Maybe we need to have one area where we have monument that talks about the history, not just of this state, but of this country. And Charles, I got to tell you something. My heart goes out. I'm watching you on TV. My heart's breaking. But my heart's breaking for the veterans in that war that died defending their homes and the only thing they knew in this country, who, by the way, never had a slave. So there's hurt there, and I think we need to remember it on both sides of the issue. And the only thing that I keep thinking to myself, I can't help but think what Dr. King would say if he was alive today at what is happening in this country because I think it's despicable. Betsy, I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. I just want to, again, clarify what is the proposal, was simply to put this memorial pedestal into safekeeping, to remove it, put it in safekeeping, not to come to a conclusion on where it will ultimately be placed. No one is at all recommending that it be destroyed in any way, and that has been supported by the folks that raised the money, and I probably shouldn't say that, by Ms. Green, to do that, to keep it for safekeeping because of what we've seen throughout this country happening to memorials that are located in a place where people do have concerns, a place of justice, a courthouse where people are supposed to all be treated the same. You know, my perception is very different. I was raised in the North. I went through some riots. Went through some riots in Michigan in the 1960s. I'm very aware of some of the issues. But I had a family that took me, my mother took me to the March on Washington in 1968 so that I would understand what that was all about. You know, there's an old saying, you have to be carefully taught, and people need to learn history. It's not easy, but you have to understand the history and what it means to people. And we aren't the same today that we were in 1924. We have a very different knowledge base. We have a very different demographic than we had then. No one is saying that the reason that that memorial was put up by those folks, if you look at the list, the leadership here in Manatee County that donated to create that memorial, but it was a very different time, 1924. You know, so some of us do remember very strongly the Civil Rights Era and what it meant, and because we kind of lived through it. And obviously, I'm white. I didn't live through it the way black people did. So it affects people differently, and we have to be aware of that. And to say that this is something that our forefathers put forth and therefore cannot be removed, I don't buy that. I don't buy that argument because I know what it means to people. People have told me what it means to them. And people will look at this at a justice, the Center for Justice in our community, and say, that is a memorial that reminds me of a time when there was no justice. And I spent the summer reading books, watching movies, interesting about the Holocaust. I said it was my Summer of Man's Inhumanity of Man. Read all these books about the Holocaust. Read a book called Homegoing about where the slaves did come from. Fascinating book. Was written about slavery and how it started with black tribes against black tribes selling people. Just an amazing book. Really told, changed my whole perception about where slavery came from. But it's good. It's good to get educated, and I think educated people make good decisions. So I'm going to go to Commissioner Whitmore.
Madam Chair, could I ask you, who gave you this recommendation, and you did speak to whom now? Could you clarify that?
I did. I spoke to...
Who did she represent?
Jan Green. She is president of the local chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy and chairman of the Manatee County Historical Commission. Ms. Green is at home. I called her at home. She obviously did not get a meeting together. She didn't take a vote. I want to clarify that. But she's very concerned about this memorial statue that was put in place by her organization in 1924. She's concerned about the safety. And so she did ask that we do, in fact, remove the existing memorial statue and put it in safekeeping until a community decision can be had about where is the appropriate place to put this. So that was her recommendation to me.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
She told me she would put that in writing. I hadn't checked my email most recently. Commissioner Whitmore?
May I have the sheriff come down? Do you have the sheriff's representative, please? And while he's coming down, I...
Colonel Dennison.
I know.
Will you say to represent?
I was waiting till I came down. Thank you, Mr. Smith, Major Sheriff, and I knew your name, Colonel. I've heard, and again, I'm not watching it as much as I can because it's terrible and I don't do violence. I came from a violent background, and I can't deal with violence. I hate it. So...
We would rather not have it either.
Yeah, I know. And that's why I'm glad you're here. But I've heard that other groups are coming, hate crime groups, white supremists. I heard there's gangs in this area or groups in this area that are white supremists that I had never heard of. I've lived for 48 years, and I'm just so upset about all this stuff I'm hearing.
Well, the potential's there. I mean, I don't want to scare you and tell you positively, we know that's going to take place because we don't. You know, a lot of these idle threats may very well be that. Now, we were going to take them in a positive manner and make sure that our plan is prepared for that. But, I mean, we're hoping for a peaceful demonstration.
Okay. I've had tons of calls, all day, all day yesterday, of leaders in the community, citizens in the community, business community, friends, saying, please, don't take this monument down because you're feeding into what's going all over. And thank you for the comments that some of you have made. The thing that I'm, and because of this organization put this up, now you have a representative from the organization that's asking us to take it down for safety purposes, not to destroy it. So that's where I am right now. I had no, you know, I represent a lot, I represent the whole county, and I've maybe heard from 20, 20 people to say, take it down. But I've heard from probably 50 or 60 over a day and a half calling me, stopping me, telling me otherwise. And it was mainly because of all this hate, these hate groups, the white supremists, and this violence against Jews and all this disgusting stuff because of who you believe in and who you are. I'm a nurse. My husband's a surgeon. I can tell you, I don't care what color you are, when we cut you open, you're all the same inside. And what's so disgusting is to, and I've seen it, and I think it's disgusting how people are treated on who they are and everything. This is a very volatile time now, and it's very hard. I got two little grandkids. It's so hard to see all this hate. Governments turn that way. I mean, people can think they can say anything they want to you. They would never talk to their dog like they talk to us sometimes. I just can't believe that our, our kids that are parents, you know, can't try to teach our kids better. I did not support our, taking this down because of our history. Truthfully, I've lived here, I was in the Detroit riots. I was born in Detroit. I moved down here. I came to Manatee High School, I think in 69, and then they had the riots there because we were segregating the high school. Well, I lived by myself when I was 15. I rode the bus, and my grandma in Michigan saw me on the bus getting off. Why were you at school? And I said, well, I didn't know I wasn't supposed to go. So, I mean, I've been both places. And I hate how people are treated. And people up here at the dais know that. I don't care who you are, you are due respect, and they know me from my soul. That's how I am. But we have the organization that has put their sweat into this organization since 1924, asking us to protect it. So I think that's kind of... So I think that's kind of what's before us today. And then, I think this organization and the historical society and other groups, both sides, need to come and find a place that's fitting so this place, this memorial doesn't get torn down. But in 48 years, I did not know it was there until I saw the news the other night, and I looked outside my window and saw it. And I'm maybe embarrassed to say it, but I don't deal with hate. I don't deal with that stuff, and I just have never even realized it was there. So you have two county commissioners that never recognized that it was there. So again, three. Okay, we got your ring.
Are you done, Carol?
So what I'm saying is, I know we're gonna hear from the public, but when we do hear from the public, I hope you recognize the group that actually put this monument there is asking us to protect it. The other thing is a whole nother issue, whether we keep it there or not. But these people that put it there in the 20s and the group that's maintained it for years want us now to protect it. So we gotta figure out what to do.
Commissioner Trace?
Afternoon, Colonel. Have two questions for you. Number one, is the sheriff recommending the removal? I mean, would that help you in your job? And number two, if we do remove it, will that make the possibility of a riot go away? Or would we possibly remove it and have accomplished absolutely nothing?
First of all, I don't want to speak for the sheriff or put words in his mouth because we've spoke about security issues and setting up a strategic plan as far as avoiding any controversy. And that place, you know, that has been set in place. But I don't want to speak in his behalf for that from a political or, you know, personal standpoint. In your second after the question, if you would just repeat that for me?
If we do remove it, will that make the event go away? Or make the event quieter? Or is there a very good possibility that we could remove it and we could still have tremendous violence? So in other words, are we actually accomplishing anything in your, in a safety opinion, which, no offense, you're the number one safety guy in the county?
I mean-
Are we accomplishing anything?
Yeah, no pressure.
Well, you're representing him today. He put you on the hot seat.
I mean, that's very difficult to answer, cut and clear, saying yes or no to either one of those, because you've got two different perspectives, two different viewpoints. Now, obviously, one part, if you remove it, that's gonna satisfy. But by removing it, on the other side, may create an issue because obviously they don't want it to be moved.
So which party are we giving in to?
Well, it does boil down to that within reason. You know, it definitely does. I mean, from a personal standpoint, I mean, you know, definitely, both sides have valid disputes. And from a law enforcement perspective, all we're gonna do is allow them to demonstrate that in a peaceful manner, which is what made this country. And that's what will continue to make this country.
Well, I just guess we're here to make a safety decision.
Yes.
And, you know, we don't know.
I'm gonna be totally honest with you and frank. I'm not sure-
I like that.
-that that can take place. But after saying that, I'm, from my perspective, where I'm handling this and strategic plan to make sure that the public and the demonstrators that come here on both sides get equal opportunity to do such in a safe atmosphere, that's what we're gonna do.
I'd like to hear from the public.
Thank you. We will hear from the public. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah.
Just a sec. We'll go after Commissioner Johnson. He hasn't spoken yet. You know how much he speaks, Vanessa, so we're gonna hear from him.
Okay, that's great.
Let me just say, you know, and the few people that I've talked to since we got the notice late yesterday afternoon about this meeting today, and this is also my own personal opinion, I thought we were nuts to have this meeting. I thought we were putting gasoline onto a fire that we didn't need to do. We obviously have an issue with the monument. You know, I would have liked to seen us try to settle it, get more input. At this point, I feel like I'm being bullied from one side or the other side. It's a no-win situation. You know, if we take it down, you're gonna have the other group coming in. If we leave it up, you got the same thing. But, you know, now we've been put in a position up here, the commissioners, to have to make a decision so that one side, one bully group, is gonna win, the other bully group's gonna lose.
Now you know how we feel every day.
Yeah, you know.
Us too, up here.
And, you know, and, you know, I'm just a little aggravated, you know, that we've had to get to this point because I think we could have handled this a whole lot better. I think, you know, peaceful demonstrations have been going on for years. I, you know, I respect the sheriff's department. I know you and your group, Dwayne, you know, have a plan in place, and you're gonna do what you need to do to try to keep it peaceful. And, you know, I have full confidence in that now. But now we have to, we're gonna have to sit here and make a decision that I think is just gonna inflame the situation come Monday afternoon. And I'm sorry that I have to be up here and be part of that decision-making process.
Well, the board voted to put the statute in place. The only way that it could be removed, even temporarily, is by board action. Commissioner Baugh?
Actually, Commissioner Johnson, I am amazed at what you just said because I can tell you that's exactly, exactly the way I'm feeling. I did not like hearing that we were gonna have an emergency meeting on this because I felt like that it really didn't give us the opportunity to have the dialogue and the discussion with the community the way we should. I was prepared and am prepared to make a motion to let the people of Manatee County decide about either moving that monument and putting it somewhere else or what they wanted to see as a whole because I don't think that truly it is something that this board should ultimately decide. I do believe that we are just going to give in to, as you said, Commissioner Johnson, you've got two bully sides going on. And either we're gonna give in to this one or we're gonna give in to, this is not going to solve the situation. And the sheriff's department probably still will have a mess on their hands. So I don't see where this is a win-win. I appreciate the fact that, you know, we need to try and protect the monument. I understand it. But, you know, the laws are put into place, and we need to make sure the laws don't break. The people don't break the laws. And if they do, they need to be arrested. And that's what it all boils down to. So that's where I stand at this point. I think we do need to have dialogue on this situation. I do not believe that ultimately we have to make a decision on that today. Although I can tell you that probably when we do have more time to dialogue with the community, I feel that the monument will be moved. I sympathize, truly. Commissioner Smith made some good, you know, something. But at the same time, you've got a lot of other people, too, that have the same feelings except on the other, you know, side of the issue. So I don't like giving in to any bully group. I don't think that's what county government or any government should do. So I gotta tell you, I was not happy to hear about this emergency meeting. I'm not sure how it all came about, but I wasn't thrilled because I think it's a no-win situation, and it's not gonna solve the issue at hand. Thank you. Oh, and by, one more thing. Commissioner Trace, you could not have been more eloquent in your statement than you were. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Vanessa.
Madam Chair, with the utmost respect, I commend you for in the will of crisis, making a leadership decision. This when you find your real leaders. I have no issue that my colleagues voted it down. Maybe leadership. But this chair made a decision based on the issue of what may be coming Monday. We don't know. Colonel just said so. I respect the decision she made. It showed that she's looking out for all people in Manatee County. The issue when we talking about bullies on both sides, I only heard one side saying, "Get rid of the Jews. Kill the blacks, and I got my gun. And I believe in white supremacy." I only heard one side saying that now. So let's keep the dialogue real. I would not even be in this discussion if these issues have not been hijacked and used as a rod to destroy this community. Leadership is in the position when you make a decision, and that's character also, a tough decision. Or there's gonna be some people upset on both sides of the fence. Upset Commissioner Smith, upset with him. Commissioner Benak, I'm upset with you. But in the end of the day, if it's the will of the good people on both sides, by the way, Green Berets who fought in the war 80-some years old told me, "Remove it because they hijacking what is actually stood for and turned to cause." This is what they're telling me. They've turned the situation. I fought 80 years ago in the war, 96 years old. But now they've taken this issue that it wasn't supposed to be. Now I'm offended at what they're doing to my legacy. This is what I'm hearing from people who fought. I don't know what they're hearing.
Yeah. Read what Robert E. Lee said about these kind of memorials. Read it online.
I mean-
Do your research. He said he didn't want these because the country had to come together. That's what he said about these memorials. You got to be educated to make a decision. I understand that people, you know, look what happened in Iraq. Everyone says, "We start taking down these statues, we're gonna lose America." Well, we went and took that statue down of Saddam Hussein, didn't we? We took that down right quick because we wanted them to lose that in Iraq. So to say that this is somehow against America to take down a monument? Sorry, I obviously disagree. This is actually, it's interesting to me because we generally don't have this much disagreement. But this is a big issue. And I think that you need to look into it before we make a decision. That's why the recommendation came forward. And I'm not gonna apologize for taking a leadership stance here-
Oh, absolutely not.
... calling this emergency meeting. And you may not like it, but, you know, that's why we get paid the big bucks. All right.
I didn't finish, Madam Chair. I just-
You got a real big buck.
Sorry, that was a joke.
I just want to clarify since some of my colleagues asked where this is going. Oh, this is the first protest. This national organization just can't get here in time enough. This is gonna be ground zero. This is why I want peace in this community. What you see Monday is gonna be the smallest protest you ever have and still may have 600, 800 people. There's buses getting ready to come. I've been on two national boards of civil rights since Commissioner De Sabatino talked about civil rights. I served on the board with Martin Luther King Jr. I know what civil rights are. I know what's going to happen with that monument. And it's not a scare tactic. It's the truth. So what we're talking about, we got a recommendation from the organization that put it up there from the chair, that put it up there, saying, "Please take it down till we decide where we're going to put it." And you can put a committee together. Let's do that for peace and harmony because, guess what? I feel somebody may get hurt.
That was my concern.
87-year-old Green Beret sent me an email. Said, "I have changed my position because I don't want to live my last days of what they're doing to the monument that I liked it because that wasn't us anymore. Our ancestors, our children don't need to know that we had this kind of history. Some are ashamed it's servicing up again." So this is no knee-jerk decision that the chair called a meeting. She's trying to save life, if possible. She's trying to protect law enforcement, if possible. The last thing the Colonel wanted to do and the sheriff is arrest people to the courthouse. But guess what? They may have to do it. News media across America is calling me, wanna interview me. I haven't talked till I found out what's going on here in this meeting. Then I start talking. There's nothing for me to talk about. CNN called 13-8, all of you, I talk to you. I just need to see what the vote is. Maybe character is on the losing side of a vote. That's fine with me. But to delay this for another day and keep all this animosity going on in the community makes no sense to me. If what was going on on TV, what I had seen, I wouldn't even support was taking place today. My niece and nephew and my children should not grow up under hatred and calling out Jews and blacks. They should not live against biracial marriage also. And by the way, we're recruiting children now with the monument, and we're saying they're gonna be staged at the courthouse? Come on, guys, be for real.
Commissioner Johnson, then we're gonna go to public comment.
You know, just one crazy idea that actually I pulled up from Hillsborough County is, you know, because I think it's not right that we're gonna sit there and spend the $10,000 that we're anticipating. I think, you know, in the sake of harmony, the seven commissioners here should just divide that up, pay each what, our fair share, and have the thing removed at that point. About $1,500 apiece? And then we get to sit there and we'll put it aside, and then we'll decide where we're gonna replace it someday later. And that way, we'll see, you know, how serious everybody is in wanting to try to mend this, you know, this conflict that we're having at this point. But that's just a, you know, like I say, I saw where the Hillsborough County Commissioners did that. They all, they each put up $1,000, and then they got the Tampa Bay Lightning and the Tampa Bay Rays and the Tampa Bay Bucks to fund that, the movement of that Robert E. Lee statue up in Tampa, which I think that movement was somewhere around $150,000 it cost them to take that down, type of thing. And in that case, they're not talking about putting it somewhere else. They're just talking about getting rid of it, if I read the article correctly. But again, crazy idea, just throwing it out there.
Madam Chair-
Now you're really hurting me, Commissioner Johnson. You're hurting me in my pocketbook.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Smith?
I think the interim county administrator mentioned the fact, what it was going to cost, you know, $10,000. Commissioner Smith puts his money where his mouth at. And the people in the community knows this. I donated my whole city commission salary, $7,700 every year that I served, $5,300 every year, no shares, no benefits. So the issue is not, the issue is what I'm trying to make sure, that we don't have a stalling point. It's $10,000 or $9,000 to remove this statue off the property of the Manatee County Courthouse. It's not 140, 150. And it's interesting that what the commissioner says, which she's right. But guess what? The sports team said bad business to keep it. That's why we made contribution. It's not good business practice. That's why they collectively wrote the checks to keep from losing major events nationally that was gonna come to their community. The Lightning only developing downtown. Guess what? It's bad business to keep it up. Of course they wrote a check. So I made a motion. I haven't had a second to it. The motion needs to pass or die. I can live with it.
Madam Chair, what was the motion? I'm sorry.
Do you have a motion, Charles?
The motion was, when you read the letter from the chairman, to accept the recommendation that staff made and also the chairwoman of the United, pardon the name again, that was my motion to accept it and remove the statue. We got it from the chair of the organization who historically has all the records back to 1924, by the way, who understands that now it done changed the concept of what even they may have stood for, and they don't feel comfortable anymore.
So your motion is to go with the recommendation to provide and request the contractor be paid up to $10,000, whatever.
That's my motion, Madam Chair. The recommendation from staff, the recommendation from the chairman of that organization who is requesting for us to do what needs to be done today. And my motion is to follow that direction from staff and from the chair of the organization who actually have ownership of the monument. We refusing to do what they asking us.
And Madam Chair, that is, Madam Chair, that is an estimate at this point. It's $1,000. It could be a little higher, it could be a little lower. So we need some flexibility on that amount.
All right. I'm gonna step down as chair. I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner De Sabatino so that I can second the motion.
You can still second as chair.
Oh, can I? Oh, gosh, I always forget. Thank you. I can second as chair. I second the motion.
I had another minute.
Are we gonna hear from the public?
All right. Well, we are gonna hear from the public before. Thank you for keeping me straight. We're gonna hear from the public about this issue. And again, this is an emergency meeting. We will have more public comment. We recognize that it's amazing to me to have all of you show up on a Friday afternoon without even an agenda. So it's just for a temporary, the motion is to move it for temporary storage for temporary storage before it's determined what the ultimate location of this memorial will be. First up, I have Suzy Copeland.
Good afternoon to each of you, and I wanna start out by saying that times and circumstances often cause us to change our mind, our position, and our ideas about a particular situation. And with that said, when I look back at the history of our country and look at the cause of the Civil War, and it was really between the free and the slave states discussion, that is the basis of the Civil War. And with that said, I'd like to say that, I had my notes here and I can't find them, here we go, that after the Civil War reconstruction, there was a surge, and when the Supreme Court ruled that the Jim Crow laws were unconstitutional, there began a surge of these hate groups rising up. We had the terror against blacks during that time, and this period was eighteen ninety-five to nineteen fifteen is the beginning of this period. And it was Southern whites who started this process. You had lynching of blacks skyrocketed. The KKK became resurgent. And when we look at our times right now, we look at our country right now, we see we need to make some changes with one another. And I believe that now is the time to have the monument removed in order that we can start a conversation between all of us, that we can get along and have some unity within this community. We don't want, I don't want, the things that happen, that are happening across this country to happen here in Manatee County. I've been here over forty-some years, I've never experienced anything like that, and I don't want to see that happen here in Manatee County. And I'm asking each of you commissioners, for the sake of unity, for the sake of peace, and for the right thing, let's have the monument removed. It's just not the time to have that at our old courthouse, which represents equality and justice. And that does not represent equality and justice. So, I'm asking that you vote to please have that monument removed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Hines to be followed by Diane Perry.
Barbara Hines, home speech, and this is one of the, going to be one of the, we'll get it, we'll get it straight, it'll be okay. This is going to be one of the hardest things that I have ever said, because there's part of my family that I usually don't talk about. My great-great-granddaddy, might be another great, but I've, that we've lost track of. He fought, his last name was Russell, and there are a lot of African-Americans who have the name Russell. He fought for the Confederacy in the Civil War. He fought for his way of life, his way of life to own people, to steal their labor, to sell their children, to kill them. And my, my family in Philadelphia, Mississippi, Bloody Neshoba, I was related to that town, most of them by blood, and if not, they were kissing kin, were members of the Klan. Great Uncle TC, he had a bright shiny, a shiny red robe that I pulled out, and boy, did they come down on me. And talking to a cousin later, as an adult, she volunteered that her daddy's Klan robe was white, but it was satin. This was during the time that they killed the civil rights workers in Philadelphia, Mississippi. Three young men who did nothing but tried to register people to vote. The other side of this was, I thought my family were nice people. I did, they were really nice. They were, they were community leaders. That's why I'm not surprised that community leaders were involved in this monument. They were community leaders. So, I called Aunt Roberta. Her husband had the bright shiny red robe. And I said, Aunt Roberta, people are coming down to register people to vote, can I stay with you? She said, you stay up there where you belong. That's the only mean thing she ever said to me in her life. And I always wonder what would have happened? Would it have been better or worse if I had, if I had insisted on, on coming? My relatives, and half of my blood is from the Confederacy, and my relatives did not fight for the Union, they fought against the United States. Not only that, in Philadelphia, Mississippi, when I was, when I was wandering around, I didn't see a lot of Confederate monuments that were new, that weren't new Confederate monuments. These, may I, may I?
Please just wrap up, because we have lots of speakers, and it is Friday afternoon.
I am almost done. I am almost done. These were placed during the Jim Crow era. They were an in-your-face, you, we could do anything to you, you're not like us, we're better, and that monument has no place in any public area, much less by a hall of justice. Thank you.
Diane Perry to be followed by Liv Coleman.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you for calling this meeting. As one of the organizers of the Monday evening protest and march, we really appreciate that you are concerned about the safety. We are very much concerned about our safety and everyone's safety as well. So, thank you for this. I've had to adapt my remarks a little bit after hearing everything that all of you have I urge the commissioners to make a wise decision today, a moral decision, a public safety decision, and to remove the Confederate memorial from the Manatee County courthouse lawn immediately. Be courageous. Take a stand against the vile institutions of slavery and racism that this memorial symbolizes. You can decide a more appropriate location later. In other words, support the request of the Daughters of the Confederacy and the Historical This memorial would be best suited to a location where its symbolism of racism can be explained within the context of history, where it is a teaching tool and not one that glorifies the institutions of slavery and racism. Certainly, we should study our history, the history that has left a stain on our country. We do not need to honor and glorify that, nor the leaders, nor the soldiers who fought a war against the United States and lost. We cannot allow this statue, or any statues in our country, to be a symbol or recruiting tool for white supremacy. This memorial has no place in front of a courthouse, no place near a justice center, nor on public property. Think about the message that it sends to black people. That message could be, all who enter here are subject to the laws of white men. Is that possible? A more appropriate statue would be the blind lady of justice in front of the courthouse, and hopefully, that would send a message. Robert E. Lee's biographer told PBS that Lee himself, after the Civil War, said, by keeping these symbols alive, it would keep the divisions alive. Well, that it is done. And Lee himself wrote to the Gettysburg Battlefield Memorial Association, I think it wiser not to keep open the sores of war. The moral action, the safest action considering recent events, is to remove this Confederate memorial immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Liv Coleman to be followed by David Finkelstein.
Hello, and thank you for your leadership in having this meeting today. My name is Liv Coleman. I'm a professor of political science at the University of Tampa, though I speak only for myself today. I've lived in Manatee County for two years now, and I'm planning to participate in the demonstrations on Monday to support the removal of the Confederate monument or memorial. I'd like to see it removed from outside the historic county courthouse. I, I hear with gratitude and appreciation that the suggestion by the head of the Daughters of the Confederacy, that it be placed for safekeeping elsewhere, I welcome that suggestion. As it is, there's no kind of context around it. It's hard to learn from history when it's just this monument without any extra details or presentation around it. The cause of the Southern Confederacy was wrong. The Civil War was a traitorous rebellion in which white people murdered fellow Americans for the right to enslave other people. And these Confederate symbols bring pain to many people around this community today, and understandably so. So, why remove this now after so many years? You're sitting right now where a movement meets a moment. While racial injustice has simmered for years, add to that rising protests about the direction of the country, and the most recent events in Charlottesville, and the president's recent equivocation over a white supremacist and neo-Nazi rally. It's building toward ahead right now. Not everyone who sits on the Manatee County Commission will ever get the opportunity to do something so meaningful, to help us create a new, more inclusive identity for Manatee County, as you have the opportunity before you right now. By removing this, we can help make a statement that Manatee County recognizes that the systems of slavery and Jim Crow were a stain on Florida and this country and this county, and not ones that we should honor in any form. It's true that many people did not know the monument was here before, but now we do. We're doing some deep soul-searching all across America right now about racial injustices from the past that still ripple across society to every school, house of worship, and corner grocery store today. Most of the people who live in Bradenton today are new to the area after World War II, new to Florida, even after World War II. That's most people. But no matter when we came to Florida, we all live with a legacy of slavery and Jim Crow disenfranchisement of black Americans. And we all face enduring patterns of de facto residential segregation by race and de facto segregation in our schools. And so, we should work to remove symbols of white supremacy, and even more so, we should take up the cause of really coming to grips with its legacy in this community. So, let's take a stand and recognize the past and present pain, and try to imagine, imagine Manatee County, that whatever one's color, we all stand in dignity, full citizenship, and equal worth before a courthouse. Thank you.
David Finkelstein to be followed by Ralph Barnett.
Thank you, Commissioner, and other commissioners. I just wanted to make two points. First of all, I hear people saying that the monument is about history. It's about half-history. It's about all the good things about Robert E. Lee, Jefferson Davis, and Stonewall Jackson. It doesn't tell the other side. It doesn't tell the other things that they said and did. It doesn't say that Jefferson Davis said, African slavery as it exists in the United States is a moral, a social, and a political blessing. Doesn't say that. It doesn't give both sides. So, is it history if it only gives one side and not the other? Jefferson Davis also said, my own convictions, I can't read this, as to Negro slavery are strong, it has its evils and abuses. We recognize the Negro as God, and God's book of God's law and nature tells us to recognize them as our inferior, fitted expressly for servitude. You cannot transform the Negro into anything one-tenth as useful or as good as what slavery enables them to be. That monument does not say that. That monument gives half-history. It venerates these people for the few good things that you can find that they did, for their bravery in battle. It doesn't say that the Vice President of the Confederate States said that the Civil War was about slavery. This has been the greatest fake news ever, that the Civil War was not about slavery. Read all the Confederate senators. Read what they said the Civil War is about. That's my, that's my, I made my both points at the same time. So, I ask you, it's, it's very offensive to people. When I was a little boy, I saw it in my hometown, and I said, why do they have a statue for those people that fought for slavery? They, they enslaved the black people, you know? I was Jewish, you know? What were they gonna do to me? Let's bring this community together. Let's, let's either put up a statue that says everything about the Civil War. What did Jefferson Davis say and do? The good and the bad? What did all the other people say, the good and the bad? Let's not leave half-history up there. It's in front of a courthouse. In a courthouse, each side makes their argument, and a judge decides. This is, this is only making one side. This is as if someone walked into a courthouse and only made one side, and then the judge got to decide. Let's, let's take it down.
Thank you. Ralph Barnett to be followed by Brett Ballinger.
Hi. I'd like to preface my remarks with a short notation to Heather Heyer and the price she paid, just part of a long line of prices paid by people fighting for the equal treatment of people in this country. Since, for the ten years I've lived in Bradenton, I've been very aware of this monument, and I think my wife has probably gotten tired of me talking about it. But I was introduced to it when I went to pay a parking ticket, and it was right off the right side of the main entrance to the courthouse. The, it just simply shocked me, not so much as it made me angry, because it was just like being at home. I'm a proud native of Durham, North Carolina, and I'm sorry I wasn't there for the battle at the courthouse, but we finally got that one done. The right thing needs to be done here, it doesn't need to be done the same way. I think that if you're going to enter a courthouse, just as every citizen has a reasonable expectation to privacy, every citizen should have a reasonable expectation to justice. And what that memorial says, sitting outside of a courthouse, is that you're black, you're gonna be judged, for the most part, if not all the way by whites, and you're not gonna get justice here. And a quick look at the, the records that have come out of this community, whether they're just police records or the court records, pretty much points in that direction. I'm a filmmaker. I spent the last seven, eight years studying Manatee County, Bradenton, Rubonia, Sarasota, all these counties. And there's a lot of information that points to the, just the degradation, the dehumanization that's directed at African-Americans and people of color in general. This is just one thing. This is not the only thing. The Martin Luther King ends not far from here. It also ends on the other end, near where I live, at Twenty-seventh Street. That's not a mistake. That's not a mistake. It's intentional. The same thing happens in Sarasota. It ends at Tuttle, and on the other, not at Tuttle, at Lockwood Ridge, and on the other end, it ends at Forty-one. That's not a mistake. These things are intentional, they're public policy decisions that come from people like yourselves, or organizations like this one. And if public policy positions aren't taken to correct them, then you wind up with public positions by citizens that create the kind of problems that are probably gonna come on Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Brett Ballinger to be followed by Lisa Vernon.
Well, my-
Well, my opinion, it is history. When is it gonna stop? Our slavery was from the beginning of the United States of America. If we're going to take down this one, we have to take down George Washington's monument and all the monuments in DC. So when's it gonna stop?
Thank you. Lisa Vernon to be followed by Jim Harwood.
Let's just point out a few things. First of all, Martin Luther King was a Republican, and Lincoln was a Republican, and the KKK was used in the South to kill off Republicans. If you were a Democrat black, you were not killed. I recall, if I, we studied a little bit of that for some gun laws in Georgia when I was trying to pass some gun laws. And they passed the gun laws to keep blacks from protecting themselves when they went to kill the Republican blacks. The other thing, the only people that really care about this racial divide are socialists. They care about what race everybody is. I don't care if you're a white supremacist, they are socialists. I don't care if you're a Black Lives Matter, they are socialists. They all care about race. Everybody is. I thought we were a melting pot.
Thank you. Jim Harwood to be followed by Reverend Clark Edwards. Is Jim here?
Pass my time back, please.
Reverend Clark Edwards.
Excuse me. Good afternoon. I'm Reverend Clark Edwards, a pastor at First United Methodist Church here in Bradenton. I've lived here a year. You know, Bradenton is a wonderful community. I just wanna say that. I've enjoyed getting to know people and I work with people in this community, and it's a wonderful community, and we wanna keep it a wonderful community. Ms. Green has graciously requested the removal of the statue, and that will have to be decided. I'm here today just simply to offer words of peace. We want peace in this community. We don't want another tragedy to occur. And so I wanna offer the same words that I offered to this commission a few months ago at a devotion, and I'd just share these words of St. Francis of Assisi's. "Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there's hatred, let me sow love. Where there's injury, pardon. Where there's doubt, faith. Where there's despair, hope. Where there's darkness, light. Where there's sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life." Thank you.
Thank you. James Anderson to be followed by Bob J. I don't know who Bob J. is. Is Mr. Anderson in the house? Just come forward.
Hello. This is my first time being at any one of these type of meetings. I'm here to say that no statue anywhere should be taken down, no matter what the past history was. I'm not an educated historian, but I've always liked history, and I've been to a lot of historical places, at least ate a so Civil War battlefield. I have plaques on a couple of them with my own name. I'm here mainly today because I thought this was going to be about protection for Monday's meeting, not about taking it down and putting it somewhere else. I don't believe it should be moved anywhere. You give people an inch, and you take a mile, okay? That's why the NRA doesn't give up anything, okay? I'm sick of hearing about everybody wanting to move things because they're afraid of minorities or other people. As far as I'm concerned, and I met with Senator Bill Galvano the other day with the Vice President of one of the Daughters of the Confederacy, and we sat down, and we were talking about issues, and they were gonna try to get, they're working on trying to get a law passed similar to Alabama's, which would be a very good law, okay? There's a number of people out here, I don't know how much history you guys understand, but according to the woman I talked to in the Daughters of the Confederacy, over 50,000 blacks fought for the Confederacy because they were promised their freedom if they fought for the Confederacy, okay? Over 320-something thousand Confederate soldiers died fighting. They fought for states' rights, okay? Abraham Lincoln did not make the Emancipation Proclamation until January 1st, 1863. The war started on April 9th, April 12th, 1861, okay? So do the math, okay? And I have information at home, similar to a couple of these other things read, that Abraham Lincoln didn't think any higher than the blacks than whoever just read this last thing. He thought blacks were also inferior to whites. I do not, before anyone accuses me of being a racist, okay? I would be against slavery, obviously, but I cannot see giving in to neo-Nazis, Ku Klux Klan, NAACP, transgender people, or anybody else that wants to move any statues anywhere. They defaced the one up on 495, up on 95, threw red paint all over it. One of the ladies from the Daughters of the Confederacy had a row of whose name was on one of those stones.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so I said my piece, I guess.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. That's what's great about this country, we all can. Bob J. to be followed by Yaya Stanford. Is Bob J. in the audience? Bob J. from Heritage Harbor? Yaya Stanford? Hope I'm saying that correctly.
We love your name.
Yaya.
Yaya.
I know that's sometimes Greek for grandmother, but...
Oh, it is? Oh, so she's a grandma.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commission, for having this meeting today. I am a part of a group, a community service group here in Manatee County called America First Team Manatee. And what we do...
Wait. Please.
She started something. You know, that's what I'm talking about.
Sorry, we need to make sure that there's, we'll give you your time, ma'am. Just hold on a sec.
Pause.
We're gonna have a very calm discussion today about where we are. I know it's very emotional. Thank you.
We do all kinds of community service work, and one of the main things we do is service our veterans across the state. We are part of the rally to protect our monuments that is going to show up on Monday. And I can assure every one of you and everyone here in this room that we are not bullies. We are not about violence. We are about doing good things for our community and our veterans. We respect our history. We recognize there's a lot of ugliness in it, without question, without question. But we would not be where we are today had we not gone through all of that conflict. Erasing it doesn't make it go away. Hiding it, shelving it, destroying it, doesn't make it go away. And for that matter, it makes our, it lessens our accomplishments from where we have come. We need to recognize the value in those lessons in our history, and we need to honor the people that lost their lives, serving that, getting us to where we are today. I do. I spend a lot of time on these veterans, a lot of energy, and I'm deeply saddened by the threat of violence to get us to forget our past. It frightens me that that has come to our community. We live in the greatest country in the world, in the greatest state in the greatest country in the world. And Manatee County is absolutely wonderful. That's why we're all here. But to erase how we've gotten here and to ignore our veterans and the memorials that we have erected in their honor, I think is a huge mistake. That's how we feel, but I can assure you again, I wanna reiterate, we will rally to protect our monuments and to serve our veterans on Monday, but we aren't about violence at all. And we should not be classified as bullies, and we should not be classified as racists because we're patriots. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Tom Whitaker to be followed by Catherine Brightville.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
From a procedural perspective, let me just point out that you all are, this whole proceeding is outside of your rules because it was noticed for one specific topic, and that was security measures for Monday. And to try to bootstrap in this discussion under the proviso of security measures is just not appropriate. And I cite you, and I know Mickey can advise you all on it, but it's your own rule 4.1.3, emergency meetings, fourth line from the bottom. The notice shall be in writing if possible. No other business shall be transacted at the meeting, other than the notice that's given in the timeframe. So we are definitely outside of that notice. So going ahead and moving to the other comments, if this were a legal meeting that we could have a dialogue on, to allow outsiders to make a proclamation they're gonna show up at a certain date and time, to oppose or promote whatever and have that create an emergency is absolutely flabbergasting. In this day and time, we should be equipped as a community to withstand bullies, whatever form they take, if we enforce the law. I only have three minutes. I can't pontificate three, four, or five times for maybe five or 10 minutes at a time as you all have, some of you will have, okay? It's unfortunate because I believe that if we had a workshop or a more, you know, just a place where we can discuss ideas, as Manateans, we can reach the right decision and then we'll live with it. But to have a cram-down like this is completely inappropriate. To say what happened in Charlottesville is indicative of what will happen here on Monday, we have a choice today. We can declare and proclaim to the world that Manatee County is a no-anarchy zone. We have Florida statutes. I would say that a quick review, when you get through here, of Chapter 876, Criminal Anarchy, Treason, and Other Crimes Against Public Order. If these are enforced, we won't have another Charlottesville. Number one, when you have busloads of anarchists with masks on, climbing off with tear gas and clubs in their hands, you arrest them. You don't pull your troops back or your police back to avoid a confrontation. You don't let two opposing views collide. We can show the world, we can show Charlottesville, we can show Durham, we can show Baltimore, even Tampa, that we'll enforce the law here, and that's all we need to do. I think if we do that, we can show that, yes, we can discuss it, but we shouldn't be discussing it in the streets. We should be discussing it at a properly-called commission's meeting where we can all air this out, sort of like what we did on the emergency care hospital fund issue. We can do the same kind of meeting. This is not an emergency.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask, because we did discuss this quite at length, I'm gonna ask Mr. Palmer if he'd weigh in, and I will tell you the reason it was called because on Monday, there is going to be demonstrations. The emergency action would be to remove the statue so that it could be kept for safekeeping. I'm gonna ask Mr. Palmer if he would opine, since this was basically a point of order raised by the gentleman, that we are outside our ordinance in holding this emergency meeting.
This is an appropriate emergency meeting. I've reviewed your procedural rules. We discussed this at some length yesterday internally. I discussed it with the administration as well as with you, Madam Chair. Should the board decide to remove this memorial today for safety-related reasons, then that would be a perfectly lawful action for you to take today.
Okay. I...
Thank you. That's a point of order. There's another point of order. What is the point of order?
The point of order is to ask to read what the notice of the meeting was because I don't agree, I'm not an attorney, Mickey, but those words that you just stated about possible removal are not in the notice. So can you just read what the notice was?
I am not privy to that at the moment. I don't know if Mr. Osborne is.
In all fairness, he brought up a very good point, and I don't wanna go out...
We are having a meeting. Point of order, we are having a meeting, and you've raised a point of order, whether or not this is a legal meeting, is that your point of order, Commissioner Whitmore?
Yes, it is. And somebody's looking it up to see what the notice said.
This is a lawful gathering of the Warner County Commissioners.
I have the...
Thank you.
I have the statute.
Okay. Well, I, we referred to our attorney...
My point of order is I would like somebody to read what the notice said.
I have it.
Wait, wait, wait. We're gonna follow, she has raised a point of order, whether or not this is a legal meeting. We are asking our county attorney to pine on that. I actually do, I'm just looking through my paperwork. I have the notice. I'm trying to pull it up.
It is a legal meeting. I'll be informed by the government.
We did research that specifically, and sir, your time is done, so we're...
But I wanted to clarify, you all are misapprehending my point of order. I didn't say that the calling of the meeting was done inappropriately. I'm saying that the notice of the subject matter to be dealt with was not defined appropriately to take in what you, in fact, have used the meeting for.
I'm going to read the news release.
Thank you.
We are required, we did research this, per the statutes, that there is a 24-hour notice required for an emergency reading. And can you read what the statutes say, Mickey? Do you have those in front of you?
The notice.
Excuse me.
I have it.
Procedures.
Oh.
Again, we discussed this yesterday. The 24-hour provision applies only to a special meeting. And therefore, we are in an emergency meeting today pursuant to Section 4.1.3 of your procedural rules. Now, again, I do not have the notice in front of me. Does anyone here at the DAS have the notice in front of them?
What does the notice say?
Madam Chair, would you mind passing that down to me? I believe I know what the notice says, but I'd like to have it in front of me in black and white.
Before he reads that, Madam Chair, may I...
No, let him finish, because he's the attorney. Let him say what he's gotta say, then we'll let you guys speak. But the attorney has the floor right now, and then we'll let you speak about your opinion.
So I believe that this is the press release that appeared in the Rayden and Herald yesterday.
The notice, right.
"County Commissioners will hold a special meeting tomorrow at 3:00 PM to discuss local public safety concerns in light of national events related to the Charlottesville rally incident. The meeting will be held in the first four chambers of the Manatee County Administrative Building 1112, Manatee Avenue West. This morning, at a Port Authority meeting, county commissioners urged anyone participating in next week's Planned Unity March and other gatherings to remain peaceful and respectful. Later in the afternoon, Commission Chairman Betsy Benak called the meeting tomorrow for commissioners to get an update and discuss options they can take in advance of Monday's planned events. County Commission procedures allow the highest-ranking officer to call a meeting with 24 hours' notice when the person calling the meeting believes that a situation exists that requires immediate consideration or action by the board." Again, the 24-hour provision appears in the Special Meetings section, although in point of fact, I believe that 24 hours have elapsed since this appeared in the Rayden and Herald.
Yes.
So even though, again, 24 hours have elapsed, even though the 24-hour requirement is not required for an emergency meeting, this is, in fact, an emergency meeting because it was called by the highest-ranking member of this board, that being the current sitting chair. So I'm focusing on the first, and I'm focusing on the first and fourth paragraphs in this article slash notice. Quote, "County Commissioners will hold a special meeting tomorrow at 3:00 PM to discuss local public safety concerns in light of national events related to the Charlottesville rally And then moving to the fourth paragraph. "Later in the afternoon, Commission Chairman Betsy Benak called the meeting tomorrow for commissioners to get an update and discuss options they can take in advance of Monday's planned events." It's my opinion that this language is sufficiently broad to allow this board, based on safety-related concerns, to take a vote, if you are so inclined today, to remove the memorial.
And of course, unlike in St. Petersburg, where the mayor just went ahead and removed all of the monuments... all of the monuments by himself, I decided that we needed a meeting of our Board to do so, and that is why this meeting was called. So, at this time, we're going to continue with public comment, we'll take, we're not going to debate this, there's no...
No, I want to read something into the record.
Point-of-order, this is not per Robert's Rules of Order, to disrupt the meeting at this time, which our county attorney has opined is a legal meeting. So, that is not a point-of-order, per Robert's Rules of Order, or our procedures, that this can be debated at this time.
Aye.
You can debate afterwards, after we finish public comment, there will be time for debate, and you can say, this meeting should never have been called, it was already opined by Commissioner Johnson that this meeting shouldn't have been called. But we have an opinion by our county attorney, he has answered the point-of-order request, it has been clarified, I don't believe that there is any more debate on this point-of-order.
I want to ask my Board, if, the rest of the Board, if I can speak at this moment, or you want me to wait?
I don't think that is point, that's not in our procedure.
No, we're allowed to vote, we're allowed to overrule you.
Okay. Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
It's true. Yes. I'm asking three other Commissioners if I can just put this in the record.
If it's fairly quick.
Three minutes or less.
Okay. You can put three minutes on me, I'll be on. Okay. This meeting that you referenced to the public was deemed a special meeting. It wasn't deemed an emergency meeting, and I think that is misleading to the public at the moment. Special meeting is under our 4.1.2 special meeting, it's called by the Chair with 24 hours' notice, and emergency meeting is 4.1.3, which is different. Emergency meeting may be called, again, by the highest-ranking official, whenever such emergency meeting is requested, but if you're deeming it a special meeting, and now you're calling it an emergency meeting, those are words, words matter, and this is different than what you're saying here. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
This Board has any number of options available to it today. You can choose, I'm giving you my legal opinion, you can choose to remove the monument, you can choose to have the monument remain in place, you can choose to say, you know, in spite of Mr. Palmer's opinion, I don't like the manner in which this meeting was noticed, let's do it at a later time. Those are all options that are available to you. While it may have been labeled as a special meeting in the press release, it is, as a purely legal matter, an emergency meeting.
That's the scene.
And that is the, that is the opinion that I've given you, and I'll stick by that, but you've got several options available to you today.
And, Madam Chair, still under my three minutes, I think that the meeting was called order under a false pretense. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm going to continue with public comment at this time.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Catherine Brightbill. I was born and raised in Manatee County. My grandparents moved to Bradenton in 1960. My mom graduated from Manatee High in 1962, when it was still segregated. I grew up hearing the stories about segregated Manatee County, about the time that Governor Claude Kirk came to Bradenton and decided to use Bradenton as the last stand to fight against integration. This is part of Manatee County's history, that Manatee County has tried to forget. While we've tried to forget this history, we have this monument here that's only telling half of the story of the Civil War. This monument, that most of us don't know existed until we go to the courthouse and see it standing there, at the courthouse. I've discovered this monument existed when I was called for jury duty about 10 years ago. I was out walking on the plaza and saw this monument, and the first question that came to mind is, how can we have equal justice under law, when we have this monument to the Confederacy, and what the Confederacy stands for, and what the Confederacy fought for? So, that is part of our history, that's, that we fought the Civil War for slavery, that Manatee County, there were lynchings in Manatee County, the Klan held cross-burnings in Manatee County. The governor of Florida came down to Manatee County to stop integration in the state of Florida. Those are not parts of our history that we discuss. I'm all for the discussion that some of the other speakers have, about how we need to talk about our history, but as long as this monument remains here on the courthouse square, we aren't talking about our history, we're talking about propaganda. And that propaganda needs to be moved to a place where we can contextualize it, where we can actually discuss our history, and we can talk about our history in the way that actually teaches our children, that teaches future generations of Manatee County citizens, what actually happened here in this county. So, please, Commissioners, remove this monument to another location, such as the Gamble Mansion, where we can teach the history correctly, and where we are not sending a message that there is no equal justice under law in Manatee County. Thank you.
Thank you. Deirdre Green Larkins to be followed by Linda Sheik.
Shh. Not allowed to make comments, especially to somebody who has just had their rights
Good evening, Commissioners, good evening, Madam Chair. Y'all may have saw me in the halls, or wherever, I'm Deirdre Green Larkins, and I am the one who created the event page for the Unity March and the peaceful protest here in Manatee County for the removal of the Confederate monument. I can't lie and say that I'm not very nervous for coming up here, but I just believe that, you know, what Martin Luther King says is that, you know, that your life begins to end the day that you become silent about what matters, and I believe that this matters, and I believe that my babies matter, and for anyone who's a mother, and can understand that, I have to be my baby's voice, and I have to fight for us right, for their futures. My ancestors also fought in that Confederate war. It was promised freedom after that, and they never got it. For the ones who did live, they never got it. My great-grandfather moved here from Aiken, Georgia, and he voluntarily fought in World War I, and still came out of that, treated less than a human being, treated less than an animal. I, I am asking that the monument be removed, and be removed to a place, a museum, Gamble Plantation, what the young lady just said, to where we can have that type of dialogue, and teach our children our history, the history that it holds on both sides of it. And I believe that it being in front of a courthouse in a public space is not the rule of thumb, when it comes to justice for all and equality. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Sheik to be followed by Greg C.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You know, suppose you remove that statue. What's to stop them from going over to the Gamble Plantation and burning the building down? They had actual slaves there. That's a much better place for them to go. Suppose they go over to the Hernando De Soto Memorial? Do you know, if you go to the website there, it says that he made a swath through Florida, he looted farms and villages, but the National Park Service website states that De Soto would make a decent fortune trading and shipping Indian slaves. So, we're going to have to remove all of these. There's another statue that I find very offensive, that I want removed too. It's a famous, it's a statue that's destroyed many lives. I'm speaking of the Ronald McDonald statue. A regular diet of Big Macs makes you fat and gives you heart disease. So, where are we going to stop? You know, I think we need to take a stand. You have people who never owned a slave, fighting people who were never slaves. How ridiculous is this getting? We're letting people come in from out of state and cause all this chaos. I think we need to take a stand. This is pure and simple mob rule, and there's no place for it in our city. And I want to suggest something different. Why not take that statue over there, put a nice canvas around it, and bring in a couple of truckloads of dirt, and bury it to protect it, so that they can't do anything to it on Monday? Don't remove it, I think that's wrong. And I also, it's kind of interesting watching this whole thing up here, where some people on the Board knew that this meeting was not called legally, and they tried to shut up Robin De Sabatano about this, and I think this is wrong. I don't like watching that.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Good.
My name is Greg Cruz, I'm also one of the organizers for Monday's event, and it's a coalition in Black Lives Matter Tampa. There's been a lot of talk today, I hear a lot of talk about preserving history. Every single Commissioner's actually mentioned it in one context or another, but I'm just wondering about, if we're really concerned with preserving history, why aren't you guys that adamant about preserving my history? The history that's taught to our children in the school system right now is not accurate, you know that, I know that, they know that, but I didn't hear, are you guys that adamant about preserving that type of history, real American history? I hear a lot of people talking about the vets, all of a sudden everyone's concerned about veterans. They were veterans, they deserved to be memorialized. We have veterans right here alive, right here in our county, we drive by every day, homeless, hungry, and we drive by them, no one cares about them at that moment, and they're alive right here, where we could actually talk to them and help them right now, today. No one's concerned on the Board with helping them, we'll walk out this courthouse right now, there'll probably be a veteran or two right out here asking, no one's going to stop and try to feed them, but we're all concerned about the veterans, and history, and all these other things right now. And it's ironic that now everyone is concerned when it's your history. Think about that for a minute. After what happened, you know, I heard one of the Commissioners say, why all of a sudden? You're right, I didn't know that existed either, until our beautiful administration, and the racism that exists in that office empowered racists to, all of a sudden now, use that statue as their meeting point. Now, we know that, now that I know personally that white supremacists are using that statue, and that's their symbol now, now that's why I'm activated, and now that's why I'm up here, and it has to go. That's the reason why. We're not trying to start trouble. Let me just remind you guys, because I also heard a Commissioner say that you guys are responsible for that courthouse. Well, let me remind everybody that an article was just done six months ago, called Bias on the Bench of that very courthouse, where they did a year-long investigation, and proved that the judges in that very courthouse are disproportionately sentencing Black and Brown and Native people to five times the amount of times as their white counterparts for the same crimes. And you just admitted that you're in charge of that building, you're in charge of that courthouse, and you allow that to happen? Since that article has come out, what have you guys done as a Commission to make sure that's not still happening?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Shay Barnett, citizen of Manatee County, and quite simply, I'd like to show my support for removal of that monument on public property. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last person I have signed up to speak. If anyone else would like to address the Board on this issue, please come forward, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the Board.
One more person.
Okay. One more person, come on up.
She's wanting to get him, I think.
I know. We have someone who'll fill the void.
Thank you for your time in an emergency meeting, and I want to thank Commissioner Smith, because...
Your name?
Cynthia Finn, Manatee County homeowner since 1983. I have two, I have three grandchildren in St. Pete, two of them are half-Jewish, and they live on that block where the guy put up 17 anti-black, anti-Jewish signs not too long ago, until the city said you can only have one sign at a time. So, now it goes from, this is their block, you know, hate Jews, hate Blacks, whoever we're hating today. So, this is my county, my country, and those are my grandchildren, and we are not doing well by them. Get this goddamn statue out of there.
No, no swearing.
I can say what I want.
Nah, it's against our rules, we don't allow...
Well, I said it. I said it.
Yeah. Keep going.
Because I watched on TV those hate mongers, Jews won't take our jobs, those are my grandchildren. This is not a joke, and it's coming up now, because it's coming up now, and someone did die last weekend. Those are my grandchildren. The Holocaust happened, and what happened here in Manatee County happened, and what happens in America happens, and we are going backwards. Those are my grandchildren.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the Board, now is your opportunity.
My name's Terry, I'm super nervous to be up here, I was remodeling my house, so I'm in jeans and a t-shirt, it feels silly, but I was married to my white husband at the Gamble's Mansion three years ago, and couldn't imagine burning it down, because I'm a human being with common sense. And any human being with common sense knows what hate looks like, and for people to pretend that that statue doesn't have a very specific meaning is, it's like kindergarten, we all know better, and it shouldn't be destroyed, it's someone's property. Nobody Monday should touch it, that's not what should be done. But it should be removed, and put in an area that's much more neutral and about history, and not just one side of history, everyone's history. I witnessed, some of the Commissioners rolled their eyes today, and I felt like that was them letting us know that, you know, it doesn't matter if brown, black, and white people are no longer comfortable with this statue here, this is nothing to me, because I don't suffer because of this statue. I have suffered, I'm a business owner here in Bradenton, not some fake business, I'm a registered business owner here in Bradenton, and I've been called nigger by customers, I've been stalked, I've been harassed, and I've called Bradenton Police, and they've told me to hire a lawyer for protection. I believe the police are better than that, I love the police, I offer discounts to the police at my business, I respect anyone who's willing to serve for this country. But what I won't respect is ignorance, I will not respect people pretending they don't know the pain this statue causes people here in Manatee County. I would never in a million years not show or love the pictures from my wedding at Gamble's Mansion, because it was built by slaves, or because slaves were there, it's history, and it was beautiful, it was a beautiful wedding. But I paid, and I chose to be there, that was not a day of justice for me, I did not have to be there. That's how all monuments should be, either neutral, or in a place where people need to pay to visit them, such as a museum. So, they're not here to hurt or confuse anybody on what Manatee County stands for. Manatee County can be a great county, after they show everyone in America exactly who and what they stand for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to address the Board, now is your time, please come forward, state your name for the record.
For the record, Glenn Jabelina. I sent all of you these five pages today, and I'm just going to read the front of it for you. Dear Commissioners, whether you agree or disagree, it should be left up to the voters. This is a local issue, and urge the Board members to put it on the ballot, and let the citizens and the voters of Manatee County decide on this. We get up in an uproar, because a few people want it removed. They're entitled to that, and I want to echo Mr. Whitaker's statement, that this is an illegal meeting. This is out of the context of the emergency meeting, and he hit the nail on the head. In fact, all of these testimonies... In fact, all of these testimonies should be void, including mine. But that being said, I'm going to move on forward to that. So again, this should be left up to the voter. As far as removing it, you know what that would cost the taxpayers? We're talking tens of thousands of dollars. Why not...
It's only ten.
How much?
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten, okay. So let's put an officer there in a squad car overnight. Give them overtime. This, you know, this to remove it is nuts. There are sixty-one monuments throughout the state. I've sent this to everybody. So, I mean, where is it going to, where is it going to stop? You know, should we not write Pasco because, you know, his name for Samuel Pasco, who fought in the CSA but spent much of the war as a prisoner? Lee County? If we got to write Lee County, should we say, "Oh, we can't write to you because your county is named after Robert E. Lee"? Henry County? If we wanted to correspond there, maybe we shouldn't write them because Francis Asbury Henry, a Confederate captain, was one of the first settlers in the area. But let's not write there because, you know, he's a Confederate. How about Baker County? James Baker, a lawyer and a judge who sat as a Confederate states of the American senator from Florida. Let's not write Baker County either. This has gotten way out of hand. It's a travesty what happened up there, but I will tell you, it was instigated from out of state, out of county people, just as it's being instigated here today. This is a local, local issue decided by Manatee County citizens, period. What do you think, how do you think Trump won? Do you think everybody supported Trump? No, it's when they went in that voting booth that they voted for him. That's how he got in. And I think we're going to have the same answer if we take it to vote, that that statue's going to stay. Leave it to the voters.
Anyone else? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Ready? All right. My name's Jack O'Keefe, and I'm not here to talk in favor of or against the Confederate statue. I'm here on the principles of Florida's law and the federal law. In 1998, the Manatee County courthouse was adopted and designated a historic landmark under the United States Department of Interior, and a contributing factor to why it was designated as a historic landmark, they directly quote, "was the Confederate statute erected by the United Daughters of the Confederacy in 1924, is a contributing feature of the property." I've emailed this document to you all, and I've also emailed you the summary of Florida Historic Preservation Law that has Florida's law as well as its federal counterpart and the supremacy clause. Board of Commissioners does not have the authority here today to remove that statute. They have to follow a specific procedure. They're trumped by federal law. It's in your emails. I really suggest that you read it before you make a vote. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board on this issue?
I would like Mickey to opine if it's actually...
Okay. If there's no one else that's going to address the board at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Go ahead, Priscilla.
I would like Mickey to opine if that actually is, if that is true, what he just said.
I just sent it to you if you didn't get it.
And we did discuss this yesterday because I had a concern.
It just came at 4:37.
Commissioners, if I may, I had occasion to research the state statutes only yesterday. I find nothing in the state statutes that would prohibit a Board of County Commissioners from removing any monument or statue from any property that is owned by county government. I have not undertaken to research any federal statutes. Now, we have a citizen here today suggesting that there is some body of federal law that would govern this board's actions in potentially removing this monument. I can't confirm or deny that. I've not done any research of the federal statutes, and I need time to do so if that, you know...
I just forwarded it to you. We got it.
I am disinclined, I am disinclined to review federal statutes on the fly while seated at this dais. I am disinclined to do that. That is not the way in which I practice law.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Mickey, let Mickey finish.
And so, so, if there is some federal prohibition here, I would be surprised, frankly, to discover that there is a prohibition within the federal statutes. Nevertheless, it's been suggested, and therefore I would need time to examine that question.
Commissioner Whitmore? I'm going to just go down the line. Commissioner Whitmore?
I just forwarded you that, and that's, with the designation of the courthouse, that's probably important for us to know. You know, it's, and again, it's hard, but the people that actually represented that built it want us to protect it. That's another issue. But with this information that we just got, that's very important. So I really don't know what to do now unless we continue this.
We're going to go down the line. Commissioner DeSabbatino?
Is that not, do you want to go down the line?
No, I'm sorry. I'm going down on the order which you all have clicked in, and I've got Commissioner Baugh.
Just one more thing. The gentleman that just spoke, we can't do anything with the judges across the street. They're hired by the state. We have nothing to do with them. We just have to provide them a place to do their business.
Yeah, I think he misunderstood.
Yeah, just so you know, that we have no authority with them.
In charge. We're only in charge of providing the funding for the courts and the clerk's office, and local courts only. The rest of the courts are funded. So we have no authority, you know, separation of government judicial. They have their own. We're legislative, executive. So that's, we have nothing to do with the judicial. So I'm just saying that. Commissioner DeSabbatino?
I want to wait.
Commissioner Smith?
Madam Chair, the fact that what the gentleman spoke to dealing with that statue basically deals with the historic of buildings in general, such as the old courthouse is a historic building, has nothing to do with monuments. In fact, they're debating the issue in Washington DC about home rule, and the local government has authority to do as they see fit on all monuments. The only state that I'm aware of that it has conflict is the state of Alabama, where they have passed a state law that says you shall not remove off any courthouse. That is it. There's no such thing.
And we did look at that. We did look at that yesterday because I was concerned about that because I know that there are other states that prohibit the removal, and there was some reference made about Senator Galvano looking at that law, looking at that law possibly, but we found there was no such law in the state of Florida. That's what we looked at yesterday. Commissioner Baugh?
Yes, I just have a question for Mickey. Mickey, if you said that you've not looked at federal law, so my concern is, if there is a law in place, and I can't, I don't know, but if there is, we don't supersede that, do we?
Uh-uh.
There's no law.
Well, we don't know. I'm not an attorney.
Commissioners, you have broad home rule powers, but those powers cannot contravene either state or federal law.
Right.
Okay. So Madam Chair, I want to make sure I heard correctly. I apologize. Mickey, does that mean then that if there is a federal law, that whatever we do today, if it's against whatever the federal law is, we would be in violation of that law possibly?
Commissioners, I am looking for the very first time, and of course herein lies one of the difficulties of emergency meetings, okay? Your lawyers typically like to have more time to research matters. So I'm looking for the very first time, a document that I've never laid eyes on before roughly five minutes ago. This appears to be some sort of a form issued by the United States Department of the Interior, National Register of Historic Places Registration Form, by which the Manatee County courthouse at 1115 Manatee Avenue West, which is in fact the street address of the historic courthouse across the street, is designated, or rather, does meet the National Register criteria for the Register of Historic Places. I'm looking for a date on this, May 15, nineteen-something. It is unreadable, so that would require a little more research. Actually, there does appear to be the year 1998 associated with one of the signatures on this document. National Park Certification, National Park Service Certification entered in the National Register, and a check mark appears there. Signature of someone by the last name of Bell, B-E-A-L-L. So again, I'm looking at this document for the very first time.
Attachment one...
And then?
Has a Confederate memorial, whatever that says.
I'm sorry?
When you go down further, there'll be an attachment, and it lists what's on the thing for the historic thing, and you'll see that's number one. And a Vietnam Honor Roll Memorial, et cetera.
Okay. Well, again, I am resistant to provide definitive legal guidance on the fly from this dais. This document is very lengthy...
Saved by the bell.
...to include attachments, to include schematic diagrams of the historic courthouse.
Mr. Palmer, I mean, we did have discussion with April Coloniso, who is clerk of the court, keeper of all historic, all of our historic properties, resources, as was stated. She never opined, and I don't see her in the audience, I was going to ask her, she never opined that this would be in violation of the historic resource to do this, to put this historic resource in safekeeping, so, for future consideration, or moving it to another location. She never told us we couldn't do that. So this is new information. This is an emergency meeting because we were trying to prevent damage to an existing historic resource. But I think we're going to have to hear from the rest of the commissioners. We've got a motion on the floor. Commissioner Smith, and then I'm going to go to the vote.
Madam Chair, there's no such statue, a federal statue, or anything that's giving or governed anything by a monument. Historically, you deal with courthouse when you do that. That's why the courthouse is standing, by the way, and it wasn't torn down, because historic courthouse. The issue of that and the fact that the monument is considered historic by the federal government is mute. Furthermore, this meeting that was called, I have sat in meetings such as this one here, and Mr. Palmer is correct. The reason is not specific in vague because you don't know what action that you may have to take. So you don't list specifically the action that you may want to take specifically because of special or emergency meetings. You got a hurricane situation? We don't list specifically what action that we're going to need to take until we have dialogue. This is the dialogue that is taking place. It's a special emergency meeting, and it's vague specifically for the board to take specific action based on the testimony that comes before the dais. It's nothing but it has to be printed here. If you print it there and you stick by that, you couldn't take no other action. That's why it's not printed, as fact. It's vague specifically so you can deal with the concept of what's happening in an emergency situation. For example, if we said we're going to, well, we're going to spend $10,000, and somebody said we don't even need $9,099 because we put $10,000 in item, we couldn't even discuss the $9,099. So I've been in several meetings of commissioners dealing with these type of meetings, and they always vague specifically for that reason. My last point, we've heard the testimony on this statue. History is different for some. We disagree on history, and my colleagues disagree on history. The young lady came down, she was absolutely correct when Governor, Governor came down, Governor Kurt, during the segregation. Southern Christian Leadership Conference, SCLC, was getting ready to head to Florida. Martin Luther King ended up being assassinated. That's the only thing you see in history with King being assassinated. He speaks of Florida. And it was during the segregation that took place. The issue that we have before us ain't got nothing to do with other monuments. That's a cheap way of saying I'm going to neglect my responsibilities.
Okay. We can't talk, public comment has been closed. We're going to wrap this up. I think I can tell...
Madam Chair, could you put me on the board, please?
One minute.
What Vanessa wants on the board.
Commissioner Smith wants to finish.
So I think the recommendation, the motion I made, Madam Chair, is clear from the chairman who's requesting this to be done in the name of safety in emergency special meeting that you call legally. The letter backs that up. We're talking about moving it till we decide a better location in emergency situation. This hand was dealt to you as chairman, and you did your responsibilities as bringing it to the entire board because you could not speak to us outside of this meeting. So I commend you on doing that. I also commend you on getting a hand of this idea of the difference agreement in history for some and others. I'm a protector of history. I understand history. The monument eventually needs to be somewhere. But as you heard out there, there's two sides to that history. The history has suffered many people. Many people have been hurt. Many people lost their property. Many people had their property stole. Many people was put out of business.
You have to show respect. I know that you may disagree, but he gets to speak. That's right. He's an elected official. He gets the floor. We have no limit on it. However, sir, you are out of order, so please stop. Thank you.
Shh.
No! Public comment's closed. I'm sorry, you're going to have to leave, sir. He has to leave. Thank you. Goodbye. Thank you. Goodbye. You are being escorted out, sir. Thank you.
We're sorry. We're sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Goodbye. Bye. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Smith, please finish.
My last comment...
I'm sorry.
We're almost done, Vanessa. We're almost to you. We got other people on the board.
I can't hear all the noise. Did you call on me?
Not yet, hon.
Not yet. I'm sorry. You probably can't hear everybody's talking at once. Commissioner Smith is just finishing up, then Commissioner Grace, and then I'll go to you, Vanessa.
My last comment, Madam Chair, on this issue is the fact that there are seven county commissioners. We all have different history. We all have different background. All seven of us probably see it a little different. But in the name of justice and equal justice, this commissioner made a motion, also based on Ms. Green, the chairwoman of the Daughters of the Confederacy, who's requesting this, by the way, for us to take this action till we have a better understanding. And also, to back this thing up, for safety reasons, this was asked of the chair. So let me put some clarity into that. This is nothing you didn't have authority to do. You was requested to do this. You did your research on this. You talked to staff. You talked to the legal attorney. So all of this stuff, talking about a federal statue, and by the way, they tried to move them out to federal courthouses everywhere else over there, not the courthouse, but the Capitol now. So what statue is sitting there? So my motion stands. I would like for it to be up or down, and then we move on from here in a good manner.
Okay. We're trying. Grace?
I don't like being bullied, and I feel like we've been kind of pushed into a corner. But I'm actually going to go along with the motion, even though I don't, I feel like I've been pushed into this way. I find myself agreeing with Glenn, which this may be the first time ever.
And the last.
These people, that I, that's actually what I was going to recommend if Charlottesville hadn't happened and we'd had time. I believe that this is a referendum. It should have been on November, not, whatever, November 18th. We should have had a referendum in November of 18. Maybe we can put it in the, put it in there, and we can decide then. But I believe there's going to be violence if we don't do something today. I think for a safety issue, we're going to have to. But where do we draw the line? We're going to have to draw a line somewhere. I'm not sure today's the right place, and I will be making a motion whenever it's proper that if we do decide to remove this, that we also never, ever put monuments, memorials, name anything that has a person, because in a hundred years from now, I don't want political correctness. A commission have to come down here on political correctness. Public places, we should not, I guess we should not have anything.
Vietnam veterans monuments out there.
So, when that, when there's a proper time for that. But like I said, I will be, I will be going with the motion, and I would like to see, being on a referendum where we end up with this. And I just don't like outside people coming to Manatee County and telling us what to do, but it is just granted. Everyone I've talked to thinks it should not be moved, but it is not worth dying for. Everyone I've talked to thinks it should not be moved, but, it is not worth dying for. And so hopefully, I'm hoping that there will be no violence, that we can put it aside, we can decide when we have time. Unfortunately, we're kind of backed into a corner. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to Commissioner Baugh.
Thank you. Commissioner Trace, you are speaking with definite leadership qualities there. But I do have a couple of questions, please. It does seem to me, and I didn't hear where we were corrected, that I think the federal law issue is still out there, I don't think that we settled that. If we did, please let me know, because I couldn't tell, there was so much talking going on, I couldn't hear. But I am concerned that we've not answered that issue. Second of all, Betty, if you would, please, I could not tell from the Sheriff's Department if someone, if the monument was not moved, and people tried to damage it in any way, would they be arrested for that?
They will.
Those are two main questions that I have, because my concern is, with the courthouse being a historical place like it is, I really am shocked that we're not sure about the federal law and whether or not that's an issue, because, I mean, I was prepared to ask that question earlier. Second of all, if in fact, we're not sure about the federal issue, then I believe that we need to stop right now so that we don't break any laws ourselves, and say, okay, you know, if we can't move the issue or the monument without knowing that we're breaking any laws, will the monument be protected by law enforcement? And then number three, Commissioner Trace, I'm torn there, I'm real close to being with you, and Commissioner Smith on this, because you know, I feel for what I'm, what I've heard from so many, but I still believe in my heart that this is an issue that the citizens only of Manatee County should decide. So Madam Chair, I realize we got a motion and a second on the floor, I commend you for taking the steps that you did, Madam Chair, in reference to that motion. But if it doesn't pass, then I would ask, I would be prepared to make another motion that we put the monument situation on the ballot in 2018.
Okay, well, I don't think we're going to take any other motions, because this is a special, or an emergency meeting to only deal with safety issues, so that's why there's one issue.
Please answer my questions that I've raised, so I'll know how I can vote.
Okay. Captain Dennison, if you could reply to the protection issue of the monument.
Yes.
Memorial.
Speaking in behalf of the Sheriff's Office, we are going to enforce any law that is broken. After saying that, it's not, it's not a monumental law, it's Florida state statute law. It goes beyond just the monument. It's actually breaking of the law, that's what we're going to enforce. You know, we can't get caught up into that. I don't, I don't have that option. I'm strictly going to enforce the law to protect the citizens, that's all citizens, whether they agree or disagree, that this monument stays erect or it goes down. It's got nothing to do with that. It's just Florida state statute is all we're going to enforce. If the law is broken, we will take action and that individual or individuals will be arrested.
I think her question was, if somebody shows up with a baseball bat and starts whacking at this very old statue, will they be arrested?
Yes, they will. At that point in time, they're in violation of state statute.
Okay.
Not pertaining to the monument, but the fact they have broken a state statute, the law, and that's what we enforce.
They're attacking county property.
Correct.
In a violent way.
They're committing a criminal mischief.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Vanessa?
Yes, ma'am, and the only other question I have is regarding federal law, because I did hear Mickey say that he had not researched that, and I'm a little concerned, I want to make sure that we're not, you know, maybe risking a situation there with the federal government.
Well, what do you say, Mickey, should we not take action because there we?
Again, I'm looking at this document for the first time. It, with the continuing caveat that I'm resistant to offer these kinds of opinions on the fly, you know, this is a document that's published by the Florida Bar dated June 2008, and it, typically, and I believe this to be the case with Manatee County, we have a historic preservation ordinance in place. And so apparently, when you have a historic designation, such as we apparently have with regard to the historic courthouse, in order to get those historic designations, I believe you have to have a historic designation ordinance in place, which I believe this government does. I'm certainly not an expert at it, although my instinct is that I may very well become an expert in the coming days. But I'm just quoting here from this Florida Bar publication from 2008. "Any historic preservation ordinance should establish a permitting process for alteration or modification of listed properties. This permitting should be coordinated with other local authorities so that other permits are only given when the preservation board has issued a quote 'certificate of appropriateness', signifying its approval of the requested action. A similar procedure should require the preservation board to review requests to demolish listed properties and contributing structures within historic districts. Preservation board should ideally have the power to prevent, not merely delay demolition of listed properties." And that's under the heading of, quote, 'Regulation of New Construction, Alteration, or Demolition.' So, we have a number of questions in play here. You know, does the historic designation apply strictly to the four corners of the courthouse structure? Or does it extend beyond the four corners of the courthouse structure to include the lawns and all installations on those lawns? I cannot answer that question as I sit here.
It's also not in the jurisdiction of Manatee County, I don't believe, I do believe it is in the jurisdiction of the city of Bradenton. It is not county property, it's in the city of Bradenton. Right? Can I ask you?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. The courthouse is owned by Manatee County Government. Now, does Manatee County Government's historic preservation ordinance extend to within the municipal boundaries? I cannot answer that question as I sit here right now.
So, we are. Mr. Barnett, and?
I'm not going to guess. I'd have to research that. We are a certified local government through the state of Florida? I don't know, I'd have to go read that.
Too bad Angel wasn't here.
Well, I can tell you, because I worked on the project, I worked on the reconstruction of the courthouse, it is in the jurisdiction of the city of Bradenton. When we wanted to get a height variance, we had to go to the city of Bradenton to get a height variance for the judicial center. It is not in the jurisdiction of Manatee County, I can tell you that.
If you take it all the way back to the basis of a building permit, we don't issue a building permit.
Sure, for building permit purposes, no question, city of Bradenton is the sole, is the sole governing authority, no question, for building permit purposes.
Our ordinance does not apply to the city of Bradenton property, our historic ordinance does not apply. John, will you opine on that, since I'm not the expert?
Yes, ma'am, John Osborne, the city, the building and the site is obviously in the city of Bradenton. And I did discuss this issue with the city planner of Bradenton today, and they recognize the building as part of their city historic preservation ordinances, but not the monument or the site itself. I was talking, whispering to Mickey a little bit about historic preservation, I was involved in that with the county, my previous job here at the county. And when it comes to the national and state and even local level historic preservation, those regulations are for the preservation of the properties and things like that, obviously. However, when you have, in my experience, and I can't quote the federal rule or anything off the top of my head, however, in my experience over the years, it has been, if you have an issue with a structure, a building, a monument, and you have a public safety issue present, you need to take care of it. That is the first and foremost thing you do, and they usually recognize that. And there is a process we would go through if the board decided to remove this, to abend any paperwork we have, and this is regulated to the federal level by the National Park Service. So we would work with them on this in the future, when we just, if the board decided to remove it, and if we decided to place it somewhere else in the future, we'd work with them on the appropriate paperwork to do that. And it's just, it's a process we would go through with them as well.
Madam Chair, with available, please.
You sell the floor, Commissioner Baugh.
Okay, if I've heard correctly, and I will admit, I'm having a hard time here, but if I did hear correctly, the county attorney cannot absolutely say at this point without further investigation whether or not there's a federal situation. And I believe I just heard John Osborne talking about the forestry, is that correct? Did I hear correctly?
John was talking about the fact that it is in the city of Bradenton, that he talked to the city planner about it, John opined that, John, just speak loudly, I should not be.
Sorry, I'll try to lean in a little closer here. The city recognized the fact that the building is part and covered by their historic preservation ordinances, but not the site or the monument.
But the county attorney cannot verify that the federal government is not involved, is that correct?
I cannot confirm or deny the accuracy of the statements made by the city employee to Mr. Osborne.
So he's got to research.
I will have to say, Madam Chair, in reference to this situation, then, I am very hesitant to vote on the motion that's on the floor. I don't know what else to say, other than I don't think that we're really in a position to vote, although I feel for Commissioner Smith, and what I'm hearing, and I understand it, I don't feel that we're at the point to be able to vote on such a motion at this point.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote, please.
No, I haven't, I'm on the, I just have one thing.
Madam Chair.
All right, I'm sorry, I was trying to get us to the vote, sorry. Commissioner Smith has the floor after.
Madam Chair, you know, I don't know what, Madam Chair, Mr. Osborne clearly stated the facts as he see, from speaking to the city, that it does not cover this monument. The issue with the federal government could easily be dealt with the action of the motion, if that is the issue, whatever the federal government may say. The King Home is a historic building. The museum, King, is historic. They move stuff all the time. From the standpoint of this vote, let's vote it up or down, and the ones who want to not support it, let's do it. I have not heard anyone saying we're doing anything illegal. The motion can easily be amended to add those concerns to it. But we're dealing with Monday. And I thought staff said that it's a procedure you go through anyway after the fact, with paperwork if need be, to deal with these issues. Not before you make a vote, but after you make a vote. So I'm very concerned about what people is hearing. If you want to vote opposed to it, fine. But let's take action today, go guess what? No action, whatever side, if you were talking about a side, it's going to be trouble after this meeting. And I hate to say it.
Okay, Commissioner Whitmore.
And I just want to clarify, I heard somewhere a while back, and I can't remember exactly the wordage, when there's an emergency declared, it's open-ended. That's not true. I was mayor of a city, and I declared an emergency, and in order to do that, you had to state for public purpose what it was, and it was to evacuate the city. So, that part is not true. Now, I want to respect these, the people that actually put the monument there's decision. But then I'm hearing, but I can't make a decision, I'm not an attorney, I'm a nurse. John Osborne is not an attorney. Our attorney is saying right here that he has to research it. I have somebody else that said this notice wasn't advertised correctly, me being a layman, we weren't specific, I don't think, enough, because I thought we were coming here to talk about public safety and not removing or keeping a monument. I want to respect these ladies, and I would love to get this out by Monday, but I think the way that, again, that this whole meeting was put together, and it's nothing against the chairman, you know how social media is, but I think that we have to wait until we get this clear. And I'm not saying that I'm not going to, I mean, I support the people that want it taken down. But legally, I want, this meeting, I think, wasn't advertised correctly, and I want to find out what this opinion is regarding the courthouse and the grant. So, I don't know what to do unless we try to have another meeting in between our meetings next week. I mean, we're going to miss Monday, but if we really want to bring this to a head, we could do that. And definitely, I've had 20 or 30 people say, let's bring it to the voters in 18, but that's a long ways away. So, I think we should deal with this problem head-on, because I think no matter what decision we make today, it's not, it's going to rear its head, no way. I mean, it's not going to go away. So we do need to decide what we're going to do as a board. And there was only, in all fairness, there was only two people that I know that were from out of county. I'm hearing there was a lot of people here from out of county. Only two people mentioned that they, their addresses that were out of Manatee County. The rest of the people that I heard actually are Manatee County residents, and yet I respect their opinions too. So let's try to get this, come to some kind of conclusion, and let's just all try to settle down, and let's get some end game to this, after Mickey gives us some opinions and somebody does more research, and have another meeting, but it, not in less than 24, I mean, 24 hours' notice.
Right, there's one action.
This is a major meeting, Madam Chair, I know.
About whether or not to remove this before Monday.
It did say that in the notice, it did not say that in the notice.
Says we were going to consider options.
It did not say that, and I wish we would have known.
That's your position.
Well, totally is, I, hell, I heard it, I.
Well, you know, this, again, this is, I'm on all, I'm never on all sides, I'm on all sides.
That's rare, write that down.
Each side is right.
Right.
And I want to do what's legal, and I personally don't feel that the meeting was portrayed to the public with clarity. We're being, we're being, I'm not going to use the word bully, we're being coerced, we're being challenged by both sides, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. And I don't want to do anything illegal before Monday. The problem is, we heard from law enforcement, even if we take it down, there's no guarantee that there's going to be more people protesting that we took it down than it's still there. Should it be there, shouldn't it be there? I think the voters need to decide on that. Everyone's emailing that it should be moved to this place or that place. That's not the question. We're under the gun, so to speak, that, you know, a lot of us are upset with the idea of it, that it's reared its ugly head the way it has. Where's it going to stop? They're threatening the Washington Monument, they're threatening the Jefferson Memorial, Lincoln Monument, Mount Rushmore, all these places are being threatened. Where are we going to stop? And I think we need to get together as a country, as a people of all nations, it's a melting pot. I would like for this board not to vote, and let us get a legal opinion, and put a shroud over it between now and next week till we can get an opinion, put a shroud over it. And that way, it's, put a shroud over something, you're calling it a death of it. So, I can't see supporting it one way or another. I don't want to vote on it, because, because we're going to get slammed either way. And I'm not doing it for political purposes, I'm just doing it for moral, ethical, legal issues. And, you know, again, there's no guarantee that if we take it down and move it, that it's not going to get worse. I think it'll be worse, frankly. And I respect your situation.
All right, we're going to finish, I'm actually the last person to talk here, and I'm going to say, again, this is a single issue before us. Are we going to take down an historic memorial for protection, so it's not a flashpoint?
It could not.
Yeah, I got the floor, I get the floor for a little bit. It's not, all of those monuments removed. The idea, and this historical designation was granted way before Manatee County had an historic ordinance. This has been a historic property and building for a long time, so I'm afraid that's a little bit of a red herring. I understand that it's been thrown out, but this building has been an historic monument for a long time, the historic courthouse, that's why it's called the historic courthouse. And we totally redid all of the grounds. All of those monuments that are there were moved around, so this idea that you couldn't move one off for temporary storage, I don't believe. I think that's a red herring, but I understand, that's been brought forward, people aren't comfortable, I can see where the votes are going, but I'm not going to apologize for putting this on the agenda. going. But I'm not going to apologize for putting this on the agenda, for thinking it was important, for discussing this with the president of the Daughters of the Confederacy, whatever they're called, exactly, and trying to protect our community. Y'all can vote the way you want. That's the way it works here. So, I can kind of read the votes. You don't want to do anything now. Again, all I can say is, everyone, please be calm. This is a very emotional issue. I get it. But we got to take it in context, guys. You got to take what's going on in this country. You got to see what's in the news constantly. For the idea that this isn't important in Manatee County, nope, it is. It's very important in Manatee County, and it's going to continue. But that was the one, single issue that was before this board today, whether or not to take action to put this monument, memorial, excuse me, in storage, and so that, for future action. So, that's it. That's what I believe. I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. Everyone has had a lot of...
County attorneys on the floor.
I want to ask...
But I have one comment. I've got to state this, Madam Chair.
Mickey has one.
If four of us get up, we can't vote.
Mr. Palmer is actually next on the board then, Commissioner Smith. Did you have something you wanted to say, Mr. Palmer?
Yes, I don't think that this, I don't, I don't think that what I'm about to say will be necessarily dispositive of the legal questions. But I have gotten an email from Assistant County Attorney Bill Clegg, who tells me that there is language in our land development code that indicates that the historic preservation requirements in the LDC apply only to unincorporated Manatee County. But then again, that, that, you know...
That mean, in light of...
I'm, I'm not sure what that means in the overall context here of what we're discussing, and I'm not suggesting that it's by any means dispositive of the questions that you are struggling with here today. And, and the final remark I wanted to make is simply this. Mr. Osborne and I were a bit confused by that portion of Commissioner Smith's motion that made reference to a staff recommendation.
No.
Your staff has made no recommendations, one way or the other.
Research, research that they did.
And so, I just wanted, I was a little bit, I was unclear in my mind.
They did.
So, I just want the record to reflect. Your staff has made, your county attorney's office has made no recommendations, and your staff has made no recommendations.
Mentioned to the research that they did, Madam Chair. But Madam Chair, ironically, you may have received this email about Charlottesville, in fact, what fueled the issue to go further, that it was originally a 5-1 vote to deny the removal of the monument that led to the process of what took place. Everybody has that email.
He's bulling.
And that what put the feud to the organization of people coming there to prevent it from happening. So...
And I, and I would like to...
You have the email. All of us have the email. So, I just want to put that on the record.
And I would like staff to clarify that we did discuss different options, correct?
That's correct. We discussed half a dozen different options.
Options that could be taken.
What are they? You didn't tell us. What are they?
Well, one option is, one option is, don't do anything. Another option is...
What was that? Don't do anything.
Don't do it. No action.
Okay.
Another option is, doing what your, the motion is, is to potentially relocate the statute until you can decide what to do with it. Some other options, including working with historic commission, potentially even modifying the monument. There was a couple other options that are escaping me right now. But basically, dealt with either moving, modifying, or relocating.
And let me read the procedures, since everyone seems to be confused about why we're meeting here. An emergency meeting may be called by the highest ranking officer of the board available. Any emergency meeting may be called only when the person calling them believes that a situation exists that may involve serious consequences and that requires immediate consideration or action by the board. So, modifying the memorial, nope, couldn't do that before Monday. That's not an emergency action. The only emergency action was whether or not we could, in fact, take down this memorial and store it, so it was not a flashpoint for whatever happens on Monday. And y'all can vote however you want, and that's what I'm trying to get to, is a vote. We have a motion on the floor. All those...
So, we have comments. Sorry, you're making us come in.
I want to clarify your motion.
Madam Chair, the...
Nobody's called a question.
Commissioner Smith?
The...
Commissioner De Sabatino.
Can we abstain for voting?
The...
Commissioner De Sabatino.
Madam Chair, everything you have said from day one is consistent on what is being asked from us by the chairman, Ms. Green, to remove it till we can get together collectively and find out what needs to be done. That's exactly what was asked, to remove it till we can find out what needs to be done.
Thank you.
That's the same thing that they're saying now.
Who's next? Commissioner De Sabatino?
No, I just, I want to ask the attorney, are we allowed to abstain? It wasn't an agenda-specific item that we have to vote on.
Oh, one of, one of several options that are available to you here today, as just articulated by Mr. Osborne, is to do nothing. Doing nothing is an option available to you today, pending further research and pending further discussion at some future indeterminate time. However, you have a motion on the floor. You have a motion on the floor. In the absence of that motion being withdrawn, or the seconder withdrawing the second, the motion that's on the floor needs to be voted on.
Commissioner Whitmore?
Okay, I'm sorry. I have a husband that's home in a wheelchair right now, and I'm leaving him by himself all day. I think that it should be, that we should honor those women. But I've heard an attorney say that the notice was illegal, which I tend to agree with. I know I'm a layman, but I, I still, our attorneys can't do it on the fly. And this other gentleman that sent us this opinion, that actually, an attorney in town sent me a message, Joe Hendricks, I think his name is, asked me to forward it to him, so everybody in the world's watching this, to see the legal opinion. So, I don't feel comfortable voting on a legal challenge, and that's what's happening. And it's no fault of anybody. We got called with this emergency meeting, but we didn't, maybe, you know, too bad we didn't have all this other information, so we could have done it right, because I don't think we've done it right. So, I can't honor those ladies' wishes, and I'm praying, because I won't vote for it now, when we have two legal opinions that we aren't doing it right, because we're going to get sued, or God knows what else. But I'm, I'm asking for calm through Monday, and I make a commitment that this will come back before us, and we will have all our ducks in a row. We will have the clerk of the court, who's actually an attorney, who represents all this, who's not here now, to get, you know, and have the community, more input from the community, besides just 24 hours' notice.
Commissioner Trace.
And Madam Chair, if I may?
Second.
There's a, there's a motion to call the question. There is a second...
I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
A motion by Commissioner Trace to call the question, a second by Commissioner Johnson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
What are we voting on?
Calling the question. Remember, your motion is call the question.
Aye.
Raise your hands. I'm sorry.
Everyone raise their hand on motion to call the question.
You have to ask what Vanessa says.
Okay. What do you say, Vanessa?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, call the question.
Okay. Passes six to one, I guess. You didn't raise your hand.
I have a...
Okay. Call the question. All right, motion passes. Call the question. That means we vote on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Okay.
Well, I don't think Commissioner Ba votes.
Commissioner Ba, I know you voted against it, right?
Nay, yes.
Yeah.
What did she vote, yea or nay?
She voted nay.
So, it's four to three.
Nay.
Motion dies.
Who were the three who voted for it?
Trace, yeah, Smith, and Banach.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Now, before we leave, Madam Chair, since it died...
Well, what's the vote?
It is four to three. The motion dies. That was the only action, unless you've got another public safety motion, which was the purpose of the meeting. If you have something that you want to, otherwise this meeting is over.
Madam Chair, if I may, there was one thing that was said. If I may add, is this the point where I can...
Let me just, well, I was just going to make a comment. Can we have this come back to us in the future on a work session or a regular meeting?
No, not interested in a work session.
We're not going to take any other action. It was public safety. We're not going to take any...
I have a public safety motion. I move that we somehow shroud it, plywood it, to protect it before Monday.
Right, okay.
We have a motion to...
Second. I was going to say that.
Second.
Shh. Everyone cannot talk at once.
I move that somehow county employees, whomever, plywood it, shroud it, cover it, whatever, for protection.
Second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to cover it for protection prior to Monday at 6:30. I'm looking at our acting county administrator, John, can you do that? Do something?
Yes, Madam Chair, we can do that.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Smith, question?
What are we asking now?
Did it be shrouded or covered somehow with plywood around it?
Hurricane protected.
Protect it.
Until when?
Until we get back with all these legal opinions.
Legal opinions.
And then we can actually vote one way or the other.
Madam...
It's for protection, to protect the actual monument there.
Madam Chair, I would not be supporting that motion there. It's still there.
Okay.
I agree.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of it signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Six to one.
Six to one.
Okay. Any other public safety suggestions for Monday, other than...
You need to say when it's going to be, well, I guess you don't need to say when it's going to be.
Even if...
Madam Chair?
Wait, Robyn's got the floor, and then Vanessa.
It's my opinion that even if we take it down, Commissioner Smith, and I totally respect you, it's still there. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Ba?
Yes, I, I just want to add that Commissioner Smith, I'd like to work with you on this issue to come to a peaceful solution. So, please, any way that we can, under sunshine, somehow work together to find a solution, you can count on me.
Have to do it.
Second of all, Madam Chair, I would like to...
Madam Chair.
Wait, she's still talking.
Say that if there is any way that perhaps the sheriff's department, I don't know what has been done. I've not been in touch like you have, Madam Chair. But I want to thank you and Mickey, first of all, for all the hard work you did in trying to put this meeting together. I think it was very smart on your part and Mickey's part to try and move this forward. Had the federal issue not come up, it would have probably passed. But I'm, I'm curious as to whether or not the sheriff's department perhaps has looked into, I don't know how this works, but any National Guard help or anything along that line to help to make sure that the city of Bradenton and the, the Manatee Sheriff's Department have the help that they need to secure peace come Monday evening.
Captain Dennison, if you want to reply, I will tell you when I...
Major, Colonel, Colonel.
Colonel, whatever. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Colonel, yeah, please. He's got...
That's, that's okay, Madam Chair. I know who I am. It's all right.
Number two guy.
Major, right there.
The number two guy.
To answer your question, I mean, I mean, I wish I had more knowledge or a crystal ball, and I knew exactly what we were going to contend with. But I can assure you, we're treating this, I mean, and I'm hoping not, but for the worst scenario. Bradenton Police Department is also joining in with us. But so, between us correlating together, both of us, I think we have a very good plan. And, but once again, I'm, I'm very hopeful that this is going to be a peaceful demonstration on both sides. They'll come and say their peace, and I think we're going to be okay. But we will be prepared.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. I think we're finished. So, Commissioner Smith?
Madam Chair, I thank the board for their continued understanding of at least covering this monument up. However, I truly believe at this time that when we talk about sides, that both sides are not happy at this point.
We know.
But let me say this to...
I'm not taking blame for that one.
Yeah, let me, exactly. But allow me to say this here, is that we've had a faithful debate on this issue. This commissioner still thinks it needs to be removed. The will of the power of this board has spoken, and I have to live with that until the next day where I will faithfully fight for the absolute removal. And this commissioner will be amongst you Monday in the process of the freedom to advocate for whatever you may believe in. And some of us may be on different sides. I hope it's peacefully. I hope it's love. I hope it's joy. The dialogue that we may have, it may be indifferent to each other, sharing different opinions. But the most important thing, that both sides, people die for the right for us to do it. And so, I look forward to seeing you Monday, and I will be part of the event, and I expect quite a few people to be there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And everybody, please, please be peaceful. We, that's what we do in this country. We can protest, but we expect everyone to be lawful and peaceful. And thank you all for being here today. All right.
Turned it.
We're turned.